Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are ready to begin this evening's board meeting. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential, and the district's vision to be a world-class school system. Prior to the start of this evening's meeting, we have been enjoying music from the Cape Coral High School Jazz Band under the direction of Eduardo Ortega.[396.75][396.75][applause] The pieces performed were Thriller, Computer, and Bossa. If you would like to hear more of the Cape Jazz Band, their winter concert will take place on December 9th at Cape Coral High School. Please join me again in giving the student performers a round of applause.[419.02][419.02][applause] At this time, we will take a brief pause to clear the performance area.[440.00][440.00][laughter]
Yes, it is.[462.62][462.62][laughter]
I'm trying to, yeah. It's not saying logged in, so I'm going to not come back in. Oh. It said lock out. Just refreshing.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to welcome you to the November 16th, 2021 school board meeting. The time is 6:05 PM, and this meeting is called to order. Pursuant to Florida Statute 1001.371, the superintendent acts as the chairman until the organization of the board has been completed. At this time, we also request all electronic devices be turned off or put in the silent mode. Also, we ask that you please refrain from using flash photography except during the special presentations portion of the meeting. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential, and the district's vision to be a world-class school system. Attorney DePuy Bruno?
Please be advised that pursuant to Board Policy 1.11 Subsection 2C, members may participate and vote by use of an interactive video and/or telephone system to allow a physically absent member of the board to attend the meeting in those instances where the board member is confined to home or hospital due to illness or accident. Thus, Board Member Patrica may vote by phone tonight.
As is the custom of the board, we will begin the meeting with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mrs. Gwenetta Gittens. Please stand for a moment of silence. Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
Please remain standing. Introducing the cadet who is presenting the national colors for our Pledge of Allegiance tonight is Lieutenant Colonel Retired Matthew Mount, Senior Army Instructor from East Lee County High School. Go Jags! Lieutenant Colonel Mount served over 24 years in the National Guard, Army Reserve, and active Army Reserve in numerous assignments of increasing responsibility. He retired as the Assistant Professor of Military Science at Vanderbilt University. This is Lieutenant Colonel Mount's second year as JROTC, Senior Army Instructor in the District. Thank you, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Major Mount, Jr., and the J.R. Army Flag. Matthew is serving his career in the Navy, and was likely to be a SEAL. He is also a senior resident of the Navy SEALs on the January 11th. This will be his second year as Chair of the C.K. Lab. After high school, he decided between him and fellow service as a firefighter, pursuing the path into state college, earning an Army commitment. Please stand and join me in signing for you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. As I stated earlier, according to Florida statutes, I will act as chairman until the organization of the board takes place. Before continuing the meeting, as is the tradition, we present a plaque to the outgoing chairman, in this case, Ms. Debbie Jordan, in appreciation for your service for the last year.[630.86][630.86][applause] And we are starting a new tradition to thank our outgoing vice chair, in this case, Ms. Betsy Vaughn, in appreciation for your service last year as well. Ms. Vaughn?
Thank you both for your service. I will open and close the nominations for chairman and vice chairman. Each will then be followed by a vote. I will then make a recommendation for the establishment of dates and times for the board's schedule of regular school board meetings. Attorney DePuy Bruno, please explain the nomination and voting process.
Thank you, Dr. Savage. In the nomination and voting process, the board will follow the laws mandating open governance. In addition, school board policy provides that the board follow Robert's Rules of Order. Thus, the nomination and voting process is as follows. The superintendent will call for nominations for the position of chairman of the board. Please wait until you are recognized by the superintendent. Once all of the nominations have been received, he will close the nominations, and the board's secretary will take a roll call vote. The vote will be taken in the order that the nominations were received. Each member will signify their vote by stating aye or nay, yes or no is also acceptable. We will continue this process until a nominee receives a majority vote of the board. Nominations do not require a second. Once the chairman has been elected, we will move forward with the same process for the vice chair position.
Thank you, Attorney DePuy Bruno. Please wait until I call upon you before providing your nomination. I will now accept nominations for chairman of the board for the coming year. Ms. Gittens?
Superintendent, I would like to nominate Ms. Melissa Giovinelli.
Ms. Gittens nominates Melissa Giovinelli. Ms. Jordan?
I would like to nominate myself for a second term.
Ms. Jordan nominates herself. Do we have any other nominations? Seeing none, hearing none? Oh.
May I jump in?
Sorry, Ms. Vaughn first.
I nominate Kathleen Morgan.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn nominates Kathleen Morgan. Ms. Patrica, did you wish to weigh in?
I'm good now, thank you.
Seeing no more nominations, I will close nominations at this time. Mrs. Thomas?
There is going to be votes. You should have an opportunity to speak.
Not during a pre-reorg, I'm sorry. Pursuant to the statute, that does not happen. You do not have an opportunity to speak during a pre-reorg, I'm sorry.
You have four chairpersons who have...
Excuse me. You're... Mr. Newman?
Action.
You are out of order.
Your vote...
You're out of order.
Your vote...
You're out of order. I'm sorry, there is no action vote on this.
Public comment should be justified when there is...
Mr. Newman?
...an opportunity for the board to vote.
Newman.
Action. You can touch me. Okay. That was... I'm not believing. I'm going to stay right here. I've said my...
Recession. I'm sorry, Dr. Savage. Maybe we have a five-minute recess, please.
[inaudible]
At this time, we are resuming the school board meeting.
We have received our nominations, and now we will proceed with our roll call vote. Mrs. Thomas, please take a roll call vote, beginning with... The first nomination was for Melissa Giovinelli.
First nomination is for Ms. Giovinelli. Ms. Fisher, how do you vote?
Nay.
Giovinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Ms. Giovinelli?
Aye.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, please.
Ms. Jordan?
Nay.
Ms. Gittens?
Nay.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yay.
So, Dr. Savage, the two individuals who have the highest vote count will be Ms. Jordan and Ms. Morgan. We will go ahead and move forward with those two again with another round of voting. So, we will begin with Ms. Jordan.
Nomination for Ms. Jordan. Ms. Fisher, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Giovinelli?
Aye.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Ms. Morgan?
Nay.
There is not a majority. We will now move to the next nomination of Ms. Debbie Jordan.
Mrs. Thomas, please take a roll call vote.
Nomination for Ms. Jordan. Ms. Fisher, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Giovinelli?
Aye.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Ms. Morgan?
No.
There is not a majority. We will now move forward with Ms. Morgan.
Nomination for Ms. Morgan. Ms. Fisher, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Giovinelli?
No.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Jordan?
Nay.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Nay.
There is not a majority. We will now move forward with Ms. Morgan.
Nomination for Ms. Morgan. Ms. Fisher, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Giovinelli?
No.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Jordan?
Nay.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Nay.
There is not a majority. We will now move forward with Ms. Morgan.
Nomination for Ms. Morgan. Ms. Fisher, how do you vote?
Nay.
Ms. Giovinelli?
Nay.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Jordan?
Nay.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yay.
So, Dr. Savage, the two individuals who have the highest vote count will be Ms. Jordan and Ms. Morgan. We will go ahead and move forward with those two again with another round of voting. So, we will begin with Ms. Jordan.
Nomination for Ms. Jordan. Ms. Fisher, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Giovinelli?
Aye.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Ms. Morgan?
Nay.
There is not a majority. We will now move forward with Ms. Morgan.
Nomination for Ms. Morgan. Ms. Fisher, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Giovinelli?
No.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Jordan?
Nay.
Ms. Morgan?
Nay.
There is not a majority. We will now move to the next nomination of Ms. Debbie Jordan.
Mrs. Thomas, please take a roll call vote.
Nomination for Ms. Debbie Jordan. Ms. Fisher, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Giovinelli?
Aye.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
Nay.
Ms. Morgan?
Nay.
There is not a majority. We will now move forward to the nomination of Ms. Morgan.
Nomination for Ms. Morgan. Ms. Fisher, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Giovinelli?
No.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Jordan?
Nay.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Ms. Morgan?
No.
There is not a majority. We will now move forward with Ms. Morgan.
Nomination for Ms. Morgan. Ms. Fisher, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Giovinelli?
No.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Jordan?
Nay.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Ms. Morgan?
Nay.
There is not a majority. We will now move forward with Ms. Morgan.
Nomination for Ms. Morgan. Ms. Fisher, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Giovinelli?
No.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Jordan?
Nay.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Ms. Morgan?
No.
There is not a majority. We will now move forward with Ms. Morgan.
Nomination for Ms. Morgan. Ms. Fisher, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Giovinelli?
No.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Jordan?
Nay.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Ms. Morgan?
Nay.
There is not a majority. We will now move forward with Ms. Morgan.
Nomination for Ms. Jordan. Ms. Fisher?
Aye.
Ms. Giovinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Ms. Morgan?
Nay.
There is not a majority. We will now move forward with Ms. Morgan.
Nomination for Ms. Morgan. Ms. Fisher, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Giovinelli?
No.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
Nay.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Ms. Morgan?
Nay.
There is not a majority. We will now move forward with Ms. Morgan.
Nomination for Ms. Morgan. Ms. Fisher, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Giovinelli?
No.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Jordan?
Nay.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
There is not a majority. We will do it again. Ms. Jordan? We'll begin with Ms. Jordan, Dr. Savage.
Nomination for Ms. Jordan. Ms. Fisher?
Aye.
Ms. Giovinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Ms. Morgan?
Nay.
There is not a majority. We will now move forward with Ms. Morgan.
Nomination for Ms. Morgan. Ms. Fisher, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Giovinelli?
No.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Ms. Morgan?
Nay.
There is not a majority. We will now move forward with Ms. Morgan.
Nomination for Ms. Jordan. Ms. Fisher?
Aye.
Ms. Giovinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Morgan?
Nay.
We will now move forward with Ms. Morgan.
Nomination for Ms. Morgan. Ms. Fisher, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Giovinelli?
No.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Jordan?
Nay.
Ms. Gittens?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Ms. Morgan?
Nay.
There is not a majority. We will now move to the next nomination of Ms. Debbie Jordan.
Mrs. Thomas, please take a roll call vote.
Nomination for Ms. Debbie Jordan. Ms. Fisher, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Giovinelli?
Aye.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
Nay.
Ms. Morgan?
Nay.
There is not a majority. We will now move forward to the nomination of Ms. Morgan.
Nomination for Ms. Morgan. Ms. Fisher, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Giovinelli?
No.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Ms. Morgan?
Nay.
There is not a majority. We will now move forward to the nomination of Ms. Morgan.
Nomination for Ms. Morgan. Ms. Fisher, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Giovinelli?
No.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Jordan?
Nay.
Ms. Gittens?
Nay.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yay.
So, Dr. Savage, the two individuals who have the highest vote count will be Ms. Jordan and Ms. Morgan. We will go ahead and move forward with those two again with another round of voting. So, we will begin with Ms. Jordan.
Nomination for Ms. Jordan. Ms. Fisher, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Giovinelli?
Aye.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Ms. Morgan?
Nay.
There is not a majority. We will now move forward with Ms. Morgan.
Nomination for Ms. Jordan. Ms. Fisher, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Giovinelli?
Aye.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Ms. Morgan?
Nay.
There is not a majority. We will now move forward with Ms. Morgan.
Nomination for Ms. Jordan. Ms. Fisher, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Giovinelli?
Aye.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Ms. Morgan?
No.
There is not a majority. We will now move forward with Ms. Morgan.
Nomination for Ms. Morgan. Ms. Fisher, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Giovinelli?
No.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Jordan?
Nay.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Ms. Morgan?
No.
There is not a majority. We will now move forward with Ms. Morgan.
Nomination for Ms. Morgan. Ms. Fisher, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Giovinelli?
No.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Jordan?
Nay.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Ms. Morgan?
We have received our nominations, and now we will proceed with our roll call vote. Mrs. Thomas, please take a roll call vote, beginning with, the first nomination was for Melissa Giovinelli.
First nomination is for Ms. Giovinelli. Ms. Fisher, how do you vote?
Nay.
Yes.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
Nay.
Ms. Gittens?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Nay.
And Ms. Morgan?
Nay.
Dr. Savage, there is not a majority. We will now move to the next nomination of Ms. Debbie Jordan.
Mrs. Thomas, please take a roll call vote.
Nomination for Ms. Debbie Jordan. Ms. Fisher, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Giovinelli?
Aye.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
Nay.
Ms. Morgan?
Nay.
Dr. Savage, there is not a majority. We will now move forward to the nomination of Ms. Morgan.
The nomination for Ms. Morgan. Ms. Fisher, how do you vote?
Nay.
Ms. Giovinelli?
Nay.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Jordan?
Nay.
Ms. Gittens?
Nay.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yay.
So, Dr. Savage, the two individuals who have the highest vote count will be Ms. Jordan and Ms. Morgan. We will go ahead and move forward with those two again with another round of voting. So, we will begin with Ms. Jordan.
Nomination for Ms. Jordan. Ms. Fisher, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Giovinelli?
Aye.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Ms. Morgan?
No.
There is not a majority. We will now move forward with Ms. Morgan.
Nomination for Ms. Morgan. Ms. Fisher, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Giovinelli?
No.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Jordan?
Nay.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
There is not a majority. We will do it again. Ms. Jordan? We'll begin with Ms. Jordan, Dr. Savage.
Nomination for Ms. Jordan. Ms. Fisher?
Aye.
Ms. Giovinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Ms. Morgan?
Nay.
We will now move forward to Ms. Morgan.
Nomination for Ms. Morgan. Ms. Fisher, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Giovinelli?
No.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Jordan?
Nay.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
We're gonna do it again. Ms. Schaefer?
Jordan. Nomination for Ms. Jordan.
Yes, Ms. Schaefer, can I have another tally, please? I'm probably gonna need some more. Start with Ms. Jordan.
Nomination for Ms. Jordan. Ms. Fisher?
Aye.
Ms. Giovinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Ms. Gittens?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Dr. Savage, we do have a majority at this point, and the new chairman of the board is Ms. Debbie Jordan.
Thank you.
It's five-two.
Thank you, Attorney Dupree Bruno. I will now accept nominations for vice chairman of the board for the coming year. Please wait to be recognized. Ms. Vaughn?
I nominate Melissa Giovinelli.
Ms. Giovinelli?
And I nominate Gwen Gittens, and you can take my name off. Thank you.
I'm sorry, pardon?
I'm, to remove my name, I'm not gonna be.
She's declining.
Declining the nomination. Do I have any other nominations? Ms. Fisher?
May I jump over?
Well, I have Ms. Fisher first, and then you, Ms. Patrica.
Sure. Yep. I'll nominate Kathleen Morgan, and I decline.
Ms. Patrica, nomination?
I nominate Ms. Fisher.
Do I have any other nominations? All right, at this time, nominations are now closed. Mrs. Thomas, please take a roll call vote. The first nomination is Ms. Gittens.
Nomination for Ms. Gittens. Ms. Fisher, how do you vote?
Nay.
Ms. Giovinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
Nay.
Ms. Gittens?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Nay.
Nomination for Ms. Fisher. Ms. Fisher, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Giovinelli?
Nay.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Dr. Savage, from, of a vote of four to three, Ms. Fisher is the new vice chair.
Thank you, Attorney Dupree Bruno. Congratulations to Ms. Debbie Jordan and Ms. Mary Fisher.
Thank you.
Ms. Jordan, you are not, you are no longer the outgoing chairman. You are continuing in your role as chair, so would you like to say anything before I turn the gavel back over to you after completing your first term?
I would just like to say, well, I have wrote something down for, if I wasn't here, but in the past year, I have been honored and privileged to serve everyone on this board and all of you in the district, parents, our students, our staff, all of you. I will continue to do that. I will be present, as I always have been. I will continue to do that. I will continue to serve. I also will ask my colleagues to, let's continue the work that we've been doing. We have a lot to, to get done, and I just really appreciate each and every one of you and respect all of you, and thank you.
I now turn the meeting over to the chairman of the board, Ms. Debbie Jordan.
Thank you. The remainder of this evening's agenda includes public comments, consent action items, which includes one item under Board Office, one item under Executive Services, five items under Academic Services, five items under Business Services, two items under Human Resources, seven items under Operations, as well as four items under Other Business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll move to adopt the agenda as printed.
Okay, I am going to backtrack because we did not, so I'm taking that back, please. I had the wrong script. We are approving the, Savage, that was you. Okay. Okay. The approval of established, you're gonna do this one, though?
Yeah, and then I'm gonna say that.
Okay. The next item in the organization of the board is to establish dates and times for the schedule of the regular school board meetings for the issue and year. Dr. Savage, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I do, Madam Chair. Approval of the calendar establishing meeting dates and times for the regular school board meetings for the period January 2022 through December 2022 as presented.
Thank you. Board members, is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to adopt the proposed school board meeting calendar.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. A second, please.
A second. Morgan?
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Or is it on there? Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Patrica, how do you vote?
I vote yes, please.
Mrs. Thomas, if you could tell me, 'cause I, oh, I can see it. Thank you. Seven-zero, motion carries?
No.
The next is the remainder of the evening's agenda, which I've already stated, and I will ask board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll move to adopt the agenda as printed.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. And may I have a second, please?
A second. Morgan?
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. And please record your vote. Thank you. This evening, this evening student representative is Allison Bruno, chair of the District Student Advisory Committee. Allison is a junior at North Fort Myers High School. She is actively involved in her community and her school, serving as the president of her class in the student government, vice chair of the Cape Coral City Youth Council, and the president of Lead Like a Woman Club. She participates in local athletic playing, athletics playing for Cape Coral Fastpitch Softball, as well as Lady Red Knight Softball at her school. Ally works for academic enrichment, taking Cambridge ACE and AP courses, maintaining an unweighted 4.0 GPA. After high school, Allison hopes to study veterinarian medicine and pursues her dreams of fostering a positive and healthy Florida ecosystem. Welcome, Allison. Thank you for being here. And her parents told us not to say that they're here in the room. Just saying. They're only sitting in the front room, just saying. Next on the agenda is public comment. Ms. Dupree Bruno, please address the item of public comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a public comment card, please put it in the basket provided in the back. If you need a public comment card, they are provided by our staff located in the hallway outside. The rules concerning public comment are posted and will be made from the microphone in the back of the room. Please be advised that the board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback on school district issues. Abusive language is prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, and booing, unreasonably loud and/or offensive language, swearing, cursing, or display of timber during the public comment period is prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 1.11 and may be removed from the chambers. There will be a one warning. We will, we will take recesses as necessary if there is not decorum in the chambers. Please remember that it is unlawful and a second-degree misdemeanor to knowingly disrupt or interfere with a school board meeting. Per Board Policy 1.11, the time per speaker is three minutes if there are twenty, two minutes if there are thirty, and one minute if there are thirty-one or more. The maximum time allotted for public comment is one hour, sixty speakers. You will find a countdown on the big screen in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. Please state your name when you approach the microphone. I will call you five speakers at a time. Please follow the staff's direction. Madam Chair, there are twenty-four speakers today, and the time for each is three minutes.
Thank you. Please make sure you have completed a public comment card if you intend to provide public comment. The card is a public record identifying those who speak and providing contact information to staff for follow-up. The cards are located with the staff in the hallway. In additions, if there is not decorum during this meeting, I will call for a five-minute recess. We will continue to recess this meeting as needed, increasing five minutes each time. Members of the dais, when a recess is called, I ask that you leave the chamber. Of course, it goes without saying that during the recess, board members will not discuss any matters that is pending on the agenda or will come before this body to avoid sunshine violations. I will reiterate what Ms. Dupree Bruno just said, in that it is unlawful for any second-degree misdemeanor to knowingly disrupt or interfere with a school board meeting. We would appreciate it if you would state your name prior to making a comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board who has not filled out a comment card? Please raise your hand. Is there anyone who did not fill out a comment card? Okay, Ms. Dupree Bruno, please proceed with public comments.
Thank you, and it's actually twenty-three speakers, Madam Chair, and it's two minutes per speaker.
Thank you.
Board secretary, two minutes per speaker. Thank you. Will the following individuals please line up? Robert Roper, Denise Nystrom, Keith Olson, Heather Boyle, Jan M.
I'd like to do a book review today. The Bluest Eye, written by Toni Morrison. The book portrays scenes of racism, prejudice, sexually explicit descriptions of rape and incest, very disturbing language and homosexuality. One school English teacher said they like to teach this book because the students think it's a cultural studies course. This is a problem, the method.
Hold on, okay. You just wanna make sure your microphone is working, 'cause you went out there for a minute.
Spot me about five seconds, sir. The book portrays blacks as oppressed and whites as oppressors. If you've studied critical race theory, this will sound familiar to you. One teacher protested the fact that parents had the books removed from the school library, saying, "I'm upset that they, and hurt that they, the parents, cannot trust what we as teachers know is what is best for our students." There's no way to share the graphic sexual nature of this book without using the words the author uses. It would be highly offensive as a listener, I just can't do that. This book even includes descriptions of pedophilia, which I will quote directly from page 118. Why do I have to die? The little girls are the only things I'll miss. You know, when I touch their little blank and bite them just a little, I feel it's a friendly bite. I didn't want to kiss their mouths or sleep in their bed or take a child bride for my own. Playful, I felt, and friendly, not like the newspaper said, not like the people whispered. Two of them, Doreen and Sugar Bay, they came together. I gave them mints and money, and they ate ice cream with their legs wide open while I played with them. It's like a party. This book can be found in eight high school libraries in Lee County. At Island Coast, there are twenty-eight of these books. That tells me that there's a teacher using this in the classroom. This is totally unacceptable.
My name is Keith Olson. Two weeks ago, at board meeting, I spoke on the draft for 1.111, public comments, and I noticed that there was no draft available for tonight's meeting and that there were distinct differences for the rules under public comments, and so I'm not sure if that was voted on or just, just slipped in. But I do have some comments about it. I agree with deleting the comment at the very top of 1.111 that the board welcomes public comment, because, as I mentioned two weeks ago, I think that is absolutely not true, that they're tolerated and perhaps, perhaps, some comments are welcomed if they tend to be positive enough. So, I commend you on your honesty. The contact information that we put on the cards should be absolutely voluntary. I don't know if, well, in, in the written instructions for tonight, there was no mention of the digital contact, countdown plot, but you are using it, I'm glad. In the written statement, it was that the parliamentarian would nudge us verbally as we reached toward the end of our comments. I think that's completely inappropriate, so I'm glad you're not doing what your policy says you would do. I disagree, continuing that we should not allow us to give, yield time to somebody else. I think we absolutely should. I'm most concerned about your limitation of anything that would be a negative kind of a comment. Free speech means that we get to verbally, vocally, and non-vocally say we approve, and also verbally, vocally, and non-vocally say we disapprove, and it doesn't seem like you're allowing that.
Board member three is scheduled to attend the National School Boards Conference in California. Our taxpayer money should not support organizations that equate vocal parents to domestic terrorists. Board member three may support their ideology, but the community does not. Board member three used her status to defame a community member at the last action meeting when she read an opinion piece that was full of lies. Although directing district staff is something that she's not supposed to do, she directed district staff to give her opinion to the news stations, newspaper, and social media outlets. This is an abuse of power. These actions put the district in the position of being sued, and she can be sued personally, too, and I hope she is. There is a motion on the floor to have Board Member Three investigated by the governor. Are you sweeping that under the carpet? For months, the public has asked for proof that the K-8 school in Estero needs to be built. After we filed a civil rights complaint, the board is discussing this. Yesterday, board members asked questions about the amount of money that has been spent on Quadruple A. The same concern was not shown when you were voting to purchase $9 million in steel when Mrs. Gittens was asking for proof that the building was warranted. False information about student population and the money spent on the K-8 building was provided by administrators at yesterday's meeting and given to the news. Student growth numbers were based on inappropriately approximate student enrollment and not on factual data which was available per Mr. Rittenbacher's chart. At least $12 million has been spent on land plans and steel. Policy 111 was created to silence the public. We were told not to clap, yet at the last board meeting, Board Member Three's family clapped, and so did Board Member One. That's disgusting. Clapping after defaming a private citizen is unacceptable.
Heather Boyle. In regards to the large amount of employees the school district has recently lost, do we realize that since just the October 5th meeting, the board has approved personnel changes to include 231 resignations, eighty-three with certificates, and 148 support staff? After the meeting, about six weeks, is pretty heartbreaking. These are people who deserve better and our students depend on. At a recent meeting, Mr. Dodig was asked about exit interviews when employees leave. His response was that they are optional and done via email. Why, really, is my only question regarding that? Why are they optional? Exit interviews should be required on the last day of employment, conducted in person by someone from HR. These exit interviews should be reviewed to see where you can do better. Turnover, especially at these rates, costs the district so much time and money to recruit and train new employees. Yesterday, Mr. Dodig mentioned a recent hiring event, which is fantastic, since I imagine you have a ton of open positions to fill, but it really does no good if we are not actively recognizing and fixing what's broken. I believe Ms. Fisher asked about the types of incentives that are being offered to current employees. I hope you realize it's not always monetary incentives that keep employees. At their core, they just want to be heard and appreciated. I recently read an article that stated fifty percent of the reason that people will stay with their current employers are recognition of work and a great relationship with their managers. You don't always need pay or to wait for collective bargaining agreements to value your employees. You just need the right people in place. You don't need managers and supervisors, you need leaders, which is a very different thing. Leaders who want to invest in and help their people grow. If you don't have these people in place, then maybe you need some changes in that area. Top employees need to be identified and engaged with. Once someone decides to start looking, your odds of keeping them are extremely low. Leadership needs to be effectively trained now to engage with staff, so although I have... Leadership needs to be effectively trained now to engage with staff, so although I have...
Before you speak, ma'am, would the following individuals please line up? Jen Wata, Mar Perez, Christopher Mansilla, Amanda Evans, Jackie.
Hi, thank you. My name is Jan. First, I want to thank the board for everything that you do. I know it's not an easy job, and I'm always excited to see a student representative here. I think it's great. We need you. You are tomorrow's leaders. Thank you for being here. We're here to serve students. That's our job. It's a great privilege and responsibility. I just feel like I want to thank teachers and for everything they've done. COVID's been very hard on everyone, and I don't think you can say thank you enough. And I think that's what we ask of our kids, so I just want to say it one more time. I want to speak in support of bus drivers. I want to speak in support of bus drivers, the thing that they've asked for, and from my small exchanges here is respect. I want to speak in support of respect for bus drivers. They also serve our kids and our community. I want to speak in support of NAACP's plea to draw maps that represent our children of color, and specifically, the school board members must listen, serve, and advocate for the individual needs of children and parents in the district that they were sworn to represent. The board has an opportunity to draw districts centering racial equality and ensuring youth in Lee County are treated fairly and given opportunities they deserve to succeed in school. I think we always need to stand up for our people and children of color. That is, again, a privilege and a responsibility. I want to thank you for your continued standing up to harassment and intimidation in the school board meetings, because we don't accept it from our kids and our students. Thank you very much.
Jennifer Wata, Lee County activist. I really didn't prepare anything tonight. I really wasn't expecting to speak, but I feel like I have to. And besides, I am hard of hearing, just in case you all forgot, so I will have to speak a little loud, sorry, but I have been deemed deaf by the doctor, just in case you all forgot from last meeting. Okay, so we have talked about some things about... The other day, my son comes home, and I'm starting to get involved with them because of what's been happening the last few years. Again, I've been retired now for a few years, so I am going to be more involved, and I'm going to have people awake to what you all have done. Okay, this is a board that consistently wastes our money, too, our taxpayers' money. I forgot, a couple years ago, I was floored and just disappointed about what I saw on the news about the last superintendent. This last superintendent took our grade level down from an A to a B, and you all decided to give him a $10,000 raise. I could not believe this. Who does this? Really? Just who does this? That's all I got to say. And you all expect to be reelected? Well, I'm sorry, but I will stand on every street corner to make sure the people, the public, will know what you have done to our children in the last 10 years. And I'm going to go back to my child, what has happened. I asked him how school was. You know what he says to me? A teacher mentioned marriage to him. Marriage. That's right, marriage. What the heck? What's going on with math, reading, and arithmetic? But no, marriage and sex. And I said it to my son, I said, "What did she say?" Oh, well, she says how bad marriage is. How bad marriage is. I'm like, wow, this is something else, folks. This is what's going on in our school? Instead of teaching our reading, writing, and arithmetic, because I'd like to know how you all are going to get our grade level back up? Students are dropping out. Teachers are dropping out. For God's sakes, people, you need to wake up, just like we are going to wake up. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name, Amanda Evans, a bus operator out of Leonard, and I'm the new spout president.
They're going to fix the microphone for you. Do you need to finish your comment? Just hold on, they'll fix the mic for you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. My name, Amanda Evans, a bus operator out of Leonard, and I'm the new spout president.
Hello. My name is Mar Perez, and I'm here today with the hopes of shedding light on a matter that the district has overlooked for far too long, the inequalities young women face in our district's high schools. I have recently started a petition to change our district's undressed dress code policies. Now having garnered over 3,500 signatures from students, parents, and staff alike, I believe this warrants rightful discussion. A dress code for students is necessary, but the way our policies are currently written and enforced leaves much room for improvement. The current dress code policy focuses on limiting distractions in our learning environment, claiming that personal appearance shall not detract from the educational process. However, the distraction that is created by a student showing their shoulders is far lesser than that distraction that is created by pulling that student out of class. Over 70% of dress-coded students in Florida high schools are females, making it difficult for us to have those equal-growth opportunities that our male counterparts have. With our dress code now, our body shapes and sizes determine whether our clothing is appropriate or not, leaving what should be clearly and objectively dictated in our dress codes open to the interpretation of each school's administration, causing many female students to feel ashamed and objectified by their school staff and teachers. A female student from Lehigh High School was recently dress-coded for wearing shorts that went down to her mid-thigh. When her male friend complained that he was wearing the same-length shorts, he was met with, "I can't dress code boys for that, though." With all these issues in mind, I propose a dress code for Lee County high schools that is similar to that of St. John's, which recently changed its dress code policies. Their new dress code policy is gender-neutral and is being enforced in a matter that focuses on positive guidance. It states all clothing must cover areas from one armpit to the other, down to the mid-thigh. Tops must always have shoulder straps. I want to thank you, and I hope that the voices of over 3,500 people do not go unnoticed. Thank you.
Will the following individuals please line up? Kristy Divageli, Stephanie Hoffman, Amy Blakely, Ally Locke, and Stephanie House. And this is a reminder, please no clapping during public comment, because if we clap after every comment, we'll be here for a long, long time, so please no clapping. Feel free to do your hand signs.
Hello, everyone. I'm Christopher Mansia, and I am a sophomore at a current Lee County high school. I am here in support of my dear friend, Mar Perez, about the dress code change. Personally, as a male, I can tell that I have had no problems with females. However they want to dress, that's fine with me. Like, I've never considered them distracting or anything that has affected my academics or anything that I've done while participating in school. I believe that, yes, that schools are over-exaggerating that, oh, females, if they're showing their shoulders or their ankles or any almost revealing part of the body is considered a distraction or something inappropriate. I feel that that's just over-exaggerated. I believe that high schools should be a time when students should be able to enjoy their last years of being of freedom, being a child, like, I'm, I'm sorry, of being children, preparing themselves for the real world and not having to deal with problems like, oh, you're going to get dress code just because you're showing your shoulders. Like, I believe that is very exaggerated, and that should not be happening. I also propose that the Lee County School Board should work on creating a gender-neutral dress code. I believe this will help many students in our high schools across the county, and yes, thank you.
Ally Locke. Just to push again to please ask the district to conduct in-person exit interviews with teachers. We just recently lost two more at my school in the last week. One is supposed to be leaving next week after break, and the other is retiring in January. And these two teachers were admired by students, so I would love for you to be able to find out why those teachers are leaving and what we can do to keep them. An exit interview should not be conducted via email, because, like most district things that come in email, it's viewed as optional and really not important. But when you require or you ask the staff member personally to complete an exit interview to ask them why they're leaving, I feel like they will be more inclined to answer you honestly, because then they have no retaliation from anywhere. So please, think about revising that and conduct in-person exit interviews for teachers. Thank you.
Kristy Divageli. On behalf of my daughter, thank you for listening. According to her, they're eating like royalty, so again, thank you for that. Policy 1.111 needs to go. There's nothing more that Denise said about that. I don't think we should have anyone currently employed as an administrator that cannot step into every role in the department they oversee, especially our bus drivers. It was mentioned in yesterday's workshop that all of the 19 or so admins in transportation have the certifications and/or qualifications necessary to fill in when a driver is out sick. However, I spoke to the bus drivers, and it was determined that that was a lie. According to the real heroes in transportation, only four admins have the qualifications necessary to fill in when we have driver shortages, but only two of them are actually willing to do it, to step up and actually help out when that happens. So I'd like to know what the real number of transportation admins is as of today, of them, how many of them can actually get into a bus today and drive it if necessary? To what's the status of the time clocks in the transportation area? Have they been turned back on yet? Are they readily available to the drivers when they need to clock in? And then Dr. Savage said something on board meeting public comments. He said, quote-unquote, "In my mind, I try to filter it, almost as if there's a curtain here or two-way glass. Where we are here within the bubble, and people can see us as an opportunity for open government, so they can see what's going on. There's a clarity of it, but in my mind, I view it that way so I can focus on you, board members and individuals, and keep my blinders on about work and not so much about whatever's out there." So are you saying that you sit up there and just shut us out the whole time, looking all concerned with your face? And it's not really genuine? Because that's what it sounds like. Thank you.
Good evening. Stephanie Hoffman, the parent of two children in the school district. And I had prepared remarks, but with the children here today that were asking for an amendment to the dress code policy, I would just like to spend my time supporting what they have to say. As a parent of both a girl and a boy, I have to say that the dress code policy is completely inequally applied to both girls and boys. With my daughter, we have to buy her new clothes every year. With my son, he can wear whatever he wants, because nobody's going to question his basketball shorts and T-shirt. My daughter, she can't wear what I'm wearing right now, which I wear to court, which is a tank top. But if she goes, if she shows up at school in this, she would be sent home. She also can't wear clothes with any visible rips in them, even if she doesn't have any clean clothes to wear. And this year, at her middle school, she was told that she's not allowed to wear a hoodie, even though if the hood is down, meaning that we had to go buy her new clothing when it got cold, because we weren't informed of that policy before the school year started. I believe that it's time for us to update these policies and the unequal way that they're applied, and definitely look into adopting a gender-neutral dress code policy. Thank you.
Will the following individuals please line up? Winnie Harrison, Melissa Hatter, Marina De Silva, Gabriel De Silva, Mary Beth Ocean.
Good evening. Just some of the key words that were just spoken before I got up here. Kind of pulls together some of the things I wanted to say. Dressing up, masking, putting clothes on, the way you appear when you come out, kind of brings it all together for me right here. I just took some notes that I was going to bring before you, and it just kind of brings my whole subject into tune. I watched the meeting we had yesterday regarding the school tax and building a new school in Estero. And when I saw that, I wanted to know why. And then when I got your numbers from Mr. Rittenback, I saw the figures from the last census that said, "Why? You have a greater need in the East District for more schooling, for more building, for more concrete to be poured, but even then, they told you, take those funds, even if you don't build a new school, which you might not be able to right away, reinvest. Build up something that's already being broken down." You ever heard of that? Mend what's already broken. Right here, right there, in the East District. If you can't build new, fix what's broken. What one person said, "Why would you want to work in a broken-down building? Maybe that's why some of your employees are leaving. Why would you want to go into a place that doesn't have air conditioning? Fix what's already broken. Why are you losing some of your employees? They don't want to work there. The children, fix that clothing issue. Invest. Take those masks off and go into the public and let them see you. See what your code says that you swore to do."
Hi, I'm Melissa Hatter, District 3 board member who made racially charged statements about students, had a family member yet again come sing her praises while simultaneously insulting many community members with her measly salary reference. Lee County per capita income in 2019 was $33,543. And Cypress Lake High School had 21 students classified as homeless in 2019. Imagine how the board's measly salary could have changed the lives of those children. If you divide that salary by the meetings on tonight's agenda schedule, that's $2,236.50 per meeting, meetings which this member frequently is absent from, leaves early or sets hard stop times for. Other members have walked out of meetings because they don't like the topics. The board attorney continues to enforce unconstitutional policy. See Eisen versus Madison Local School District, July 2021. After the meeting where Board District 3 had a tirade, went on a tirade, there was applause, yet no word of reprimand. The very next day, just hours later, when District 2's board member was applauded, a member of the community was called out by name, scolded, and given a warning. Our constitutional rights are not to be selectively protected, and that is what continues happening. Ms. Jordan, those investigations have still not happened, like you said they did. You said you were going to make a statement to correct that.
I'm Winnie Harrison. I originally had this written about the public comment policy. First, I imagine most people come here with concerns they want addressed rather than to give praise. So here's a thought. Instead of limiting the time given for public comment, or the number of people allowed to speak, or moving public comment until after the meeting is adjourned, which makes zero sense to any rational person, why not give people... sense to any rational person, why not give people less to complain about? Stop treating parents and taxpayers as the enemy, searching them, reprimanding them for showing emotion about their children and snarling things such as, "We don't allow popping here." Instead, take positive action on their concerns, make it so they don't want to come back and even more upset. You know, do your jobs. And if it is too difficult to digest any more information after a certain period of time, quote unquote, as one board member was recently quoted as saying in a newspaper article, then perhaps look for another job that isn't so mentally taxing rather than having speakers sacrifice their rightful time. And along the lines of how parents and taxpayers are treated, what the heck was that dragging somebody out? It's come to that? Is this a prison? People get searched, they get treated very poorly, and I just can't understand it. That was one of your employers that you had dragged out. We pay you. Just disgusting. Shame on you.
Hi, my name is Marina De Silva. I'm here to speak in favor of Jacqueline Perez. And when I was, I was shocked when I first heard everything they said about Jacqueline. I suffered a serious trauma at my previous school, Saufer Myers High School. This school treated me very badly and my parents, they didn't have any help because they don't speak English at all. And, but when Jacqueline started to help us and this school knew she was now involved in this case and she was helping, my parents were treated very differently and the school started to take the problem in another way. And Jacqueline was a very important piece to help me and my family to go through everything, to go through everything this. Jacqueline is a great woman who has helped many girls who have been abused like me. I was, I will always be grateful to her for everything she did for me and my family. She knew all the ways to help me and the only thing she has ever wanted was to help me and other girls. I don't know where my case and where I would be right now without her. Thank you very much.
Will the following individuals please line up? Iris Ramirez, Jacqueline Perez, Ariana Perez, Mary Hartley. And will Tina Harris also line up, please?
Hello, my name is Gabriel De Silva. I'm the brother, the previous speaker, Marina De Silva. Jacqueline has helped us in a way that no one else could. She was a great help to the case of my sister who was abused in her previous school and they were trying to uncover that and not make it public. She was oppressed by other kids and the school did nothing about it. And when they, we went to confront them, they wanted to kick us out of the school. Now, I do not know if the board knew about that, but nothing was done. And without Jacqueline, like my sister said, I do not know where we would have been now. And after Jacqueline got into the case, I can say that they were scared of her. They fear what, what she could do, that they are trying to shut people who can speak down, that they don't want us to come looking on what they are doing, on what we were going through, because they want to keep a low profile with, for the public and shut people who have mind, their own mind, down. And that's what I think they are trying to do with Jacqueline. She's a great woman and like my sister said, I do not know where we would have been without her. She has helped many other girls who have been going through the same thing. And honestly, shame on you.
Good evening. I'm Mary Beth Ocean from Astero. I would like to request that the District 3 board member resign her position on this Lee County Board as well as her position as president of the Florida School Board Association. Palm Beach County has withdrawn their membership from the association until which time their elected president resigns. The shenanigans, double talk, and inflammatory remarks while on this board are unacceptable by this elected official. The future school in Astero needs to be stopped. Florida DOE would not approve this school because you have not proved there is sufficient need. It would be a calamity for you to continue to support the construction when you know that the DOE would not. Just because you have a half a penny sales tax monies doesn't mean that you should discard the criteria used to determine the viability for a school. You are getting the tax dollars from the very constituents who oppose the school location for valid reasons, reasons which have been ignored for the last 14 months. We who are against the school have proven that the traffic report use was invalid as it was based on the traffic trends during the COVID pandemic when the state was shut down. The student growth rate was based on invalid data as well. It would be a hypocrisy to call this future school a neighborhood school as it sits in the midst of a community composed mostly of retirees. So what is the solution? Work with the Astero Village to devise a plan that requires large developments, proffer land for future schools. That's what we need east of 175, I-75 on Corkscrew. We need the developers to pitch in and give to Astero. Proffer land for a school. This is what used to be done in the past. So let's make this a future, one that makes sense for Astero Village, not a plan that will screw up the wonderful village with a traffic nightmare.
Do you know on Ms. Patrica District 3? I also wanted to bring up, a lot of people may not know that in Loudoun County, Virginia, a young man who was allowed to use the girls bathrooms has been accused by two girls for rape and sexual harassment. And I don't know how many he's done that to that we don't know about. And this will continue to escalate if we continue to allow boys to use girls bathrooms. You know, it's just ridiculous. They didn't want it, they tried to cover it up. It's a big mess, Loudoun County, you guys can look it up. And I also have other concerns like the word progressive. Um, what is it? Personal, passionate, progressive is on the, I guess the, I don't know, the key words, morals of Lee County District. That has got to go and hopefully the new incoming board will get rid of that. Like, what does that even mean? Now, if you look up the word progressive today, it means left-wing, socialist, Marxist, Democrat, a lot of things that are political. We should not, we, we might as well have said Democrat Party, you know? So that needs to go and that's going to be part of what we are going to be interviewing new board members about, including losing all the bigotry. Stop, I, I'm finding out kids in the lower income districts are being discriminated against. Why are they in substandard schools and trailers? And also CRT and anything, you know, arose by any other name is being taught. Let's get rid of bigotry. Let's get rid of race baiting. Let's focus on teaching children, not sexual.
Excuse me, ma'am, could you please just state your name, please?
Iris Ramirez.
Thank you.
Good evening, board. I felt the need to come out and straighten out the most despicable blatant lies spewed from the mouth of a board member here at the last board meeting. Let me clarify the first line that was repeated, not only by her, but by several of your district employees over and over again, that I have sued the school district unsuccessfully. I've never sued the school district directly, but guess what? I'm going to sue you now. This deranged board member also stated that I had one OCR case that I was successful with. She was wrong. I have six. The first one helped knock Nancy Graham straight into retirement and established the bullying guidelines and internet access for reporting bullying. It involved the training of over 12,000 employees. The second one was a 504 violation that made the district almost lose $11 million. The third one was with the NAACP, which you all signed. I gave them all the evidence they needed. And the other three were very well recognized in the news, which were with students. I'm under the weather. I have asthma, so please allow me a little bit of extra time. I have never sent any messages to this board member's children or filmed them. You see, the problem here is you have a mentally unstable narcissistic sociopathic liar that doesn't even know when she's lying. But the truth is here, the actual victim is my daughter, who was a victim of a brutal attack in one of your schools several years ago. And it wasn't even bullying. It was a sick predatory child who hunted her down, ripped hair out of her head, made threats of killing her, and brutalized her in a van closet. And Chris Patrica took advantage of this situation to call my child a liar over and over and over again. That is despicable. All the comments that she makes, she's making references to my child. And I found it disgusting that this board would actually have a member who represents bullying and would applaud the disgusting behavior of that family.
Time is up. Thank you. No clapping, please. Just a reminder, no clapping, please.
My name is Ariana Perez and I am reading a speech on behalf of my Aunt Kiara Perez, who couldn't be here today. I'm speaking in response to comments made by a school board member about my mother, Jacqueline Perez. My mother's a strong and successful advocate for children, parents, and employees at the school district and has been for several years. It was difficult to see the lies directed at my mother by this school board member during my mother's campaign. I watched this board member undermine my sister and the assault my sister experienced while she was in a Lee County school by calling my sister a liar. I watched this board member insult my mother's appearance as we waved signs for the campaign. She and her family hurled vile comments at my family and I during the campaign. She is a bully. I believe she is an uncaring and careless person who is unfit to be a leader. My mother is the true mama bear, not only for her own children, but for all the hundreds of children she has helped. There are bullying laws in places at the school district because of my mother's advocacy. It's disheartening to see a bully on the board. I implore this board member to stop the lies and step down so a true leader can make a positive difference.
Hi, I'm Mary Hartley and I am here, I was listening to everything, I was not even going to speak tonight, about the busing. I feel horrible for these bussers. Since I've been here, I've only been here about five, six months, and I've heard buser, like people who drive the buses complain about it. Now I'm hearing shortages. As a matter of fact, this morning I had my kids come back, the bus, the sub bus came early, so my kids did not make the bus. So what I did was drive down my street, pick up all the other kids who would have otherwise missed school today, and I drove them to school. You're welcome. And also, dress code, I didn't know there was dress code, I didn't know how strict the dress code here is. One thing I will say, no spandex for girls. My boys, we came from Illinois and they thought it was so disgusting looking at girls' butts working, walking up the stairs. Some of them wore underwear, some of them didn't. It was very inappropriate, but they were allowed spandex. Please, no spandex here. Um, according to the, and then back to the busing. You guys need to do better about treating your bussers better. You guys got to pay them more, do something. I mean, I've heard busing people talk about how they get up at 4:30 in the morning, they have to hit their bus at 5:00, they pick up kids at 6:00. And you know, the one thing I tell my kids, you just respect them, you pick up the trash, you help out, and you be respectful, as all kids should do and be towards the busing, bussers. So with that, have a good night. Thank you, you guys, going through, all that you guys, get them there safely.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Tina Harris. And I've come just to give a prime example. Thank you, ma'am, for your coming tonight. Because we are the heads, drivers are the hands and feet of education and you cannot do nothing without your hands and feet. You cannot move. And I just wanted to give a prime example of what my, one of my coworkers, Julie, experienced today from Horace Marsh Miller. She had to go to use the restroom and the teacher told her she couldn't use it. And she said, "I have to go." And the teacher, she said, "Well, you can't go." She, so she went on, she said, "I'm going to go." She said, "Well, she said, "You want me to use the bathroom myself?" And the teacher said, "Yes." This is what we experience a driver's each and every day. We are getting so disrespectful. And, and just like she was, like she was saying, she's a female dog. No disrespect to your dog in here, ma'am. But, but that is what a prime example, what each and every driver experiences each and every day. We are your hands and we are your feet. We are the heartbeat of this educational system. And we, we, we want you to treat us with respect, most of all with our health. Mask for our children, mask us, mask our children come on the bus, one feet away and sickly children, especially now, all the drools and spit and everything and colds, especially now. But our money. And we, we, we need, we need everyone to step forth for us because it's, it's time out. It's time out for the disrespect, even though you do not respect my position, but do not, do not disrespect us. We are your hands, we are your feet, and we're here to help you, but do not, don't disrespect us. And we are not dogs. Living, not dogs. Thank you.
Chair, that concludes public comment.
First of all, I would really like to thank each and every one of you for coming here today. I, someone did make a comment about that we really didn't want you to be here, we didn't want to hear what you have to say. We do want you here, we do want to hear what you have to say. I know I do. And I appreciate each and every one of you coming. Ms. Hatter, I do owe you an apology. I did misspeak and I told you I would say that out loud. When I spoke about the investigations that were completed by the, um, the organization that we had hired, those were the ones that were approved by the, the board at that time. And yes, there were two that were not in that, so I did want to say that. You did not misspeak, I misspoke when I generalized it. Ms. Harris, well, Ms. Evans, welcome. Congratulations. We're glad that you have stepped up. I'm sure that they're all happy that you have stepped up and you will be supporting our drivers. And bus drivers, you're right, you're more than the, the feet and the, what is it? The hands and the feet? You're the hands, the feet, the heart, you're everything. You pick those kids up in the morning, you make sure that they get to school. I know that you've been taking on extra stops because my grandkids are part of those that are getting home three hours late because of everything that you all happen to do. And I am so sorry if you are being disrespected because nobody deserves that. Nobody. And Dr. Savage, I seen you over there taking notes. And that's something we have to make sure that we are reiterating to everyone, not just our, our, our schools, our parents, everyone needs to make sure that we are respecting each and every one. You can't, yeah, I'm sorry, Ms. Harris, we can't have conversations, but we can talk offline. Okay? Because they're here. Thank you. And again, we did get the N95 masks for you all, so they have them. They have been ordered, they are there if you need them. And, um, and I did ask the question about who, how many administrators, how many people can drive the bus? And I, we were all ready to get our license, but nobody wants us behind a bus. But I do want to thank you again, each and every one of you. Oh, and Ms., Ms., is it Mara? Who had the, regarding the dress code? You have the perfect person right here, Ms. Allison. She's a student advisory president and this would be She's a student advisory president and this would be a great topic to bring to them, to have that conversation. So she's here, she's heard what you all have to say, and so this is a start. So thank you all for doing that. And we will move on. Excuse me. The next is the approval of the action items in the agenda under consent. The documentation for action items listed under consent is made available to board members seven business days prior to the board meeting. We are expected to review the materials and we have an opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we may have regarding the recommendations. Some of these items have been also briefed or workshopped with the board in advance of appearing on the action agenda. Board members, are, are there any agenda items you wish to pull for discussion under unfinished business table items portion of the agenda? Ms. Fisher?
I have no pulls this evening.
Ms. Chivinelli?
I have none.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
I have no pulls.
Ms. Morgan?
I have none.
And I have none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda's consent action items?
I'll move to approve the action items agenda.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher, may I have a second, please?
Morgan will second.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Please record your vote. Dr. Savage, please read your, oh, wait a second, where am I here? Dr. Savage, please introduce any administrators in attendance with new assignments that were approved under the consent agenda.
Be my pleasure, Madam Chair. First, I'd like to recognize the return of Frederick Ross, this time as an Operations Executive Director, Operational Planning and Project Management. I'd also like to acknowledge a Wildalees Cologne Health Services from our school nurse to an Assistant Director of Health Services. And last but not least, I have Kevin Calphe, Staffing and Talent Management from Human Resources, Information Systems Coordinator to Assistant Director, Staffing and Talent Management.
Well, congratulations, each one of you. And I have to say, congratulations. I've met your daughter, as you know, and she wanted to make sure that I seen her mother. I was in our little walk at Veterans, no, yeah, Veterans. And she said, "My mom is going to come to the district, please tell her hi for me." So, how are you? So congratulations. We are, if you'd like to stay, we'd welcome you, but you are welcome too. Welcome back, Mr. Ross. At this time, the, we are at Board Members' Comments and I'm going to start with Ms. Fisher.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I have a question on unfinished business.
Oh, yes.
Tabled items. There's nothing listed in, in the agenda, and I know we did approve the agenda, but either here or in my board member comments, I'm going to bring forth the, the letter that we put aside in part because since I'm the liaison to EDAC, they have requested that. And I also personally feel that it's something unfinished. So what, what's your preference on this? That I wait or that this should go at this point under, wouldn't it be under tabled items, unfinished business?
It's not a tabled item. It is, you have a report to give to the board from EDAC, so when it's your board member comment, you can give your report.
I just wanted to make sure that I put it in the right spot, so I know it wasn't tabled, but unfinished. So that's, that's what I needed to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry. Ms. Fisher?
Thank you. First of all, thank you to all the people in the public, our constituents, who come to share their information, their feelings, their thoughts. We are listening and we do care. We care deeply about the students and this community. So thank you for taking the time out of your busy lives to share that with us. I will especially thank the bus drivers. We could not, we wouldn't have any kids in school if we didn't have you guys, and we appreciate you. And I understand that Superintendent Savage will be communicating with everyone at the schools to let them know that we expect for everyone in this district to be treated with respect. We do have a statement of non-discrimination policy and we need to honor that. So thank you. I want to also thank all staff for all the work that they're doing and to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving and hope that you have a restful, peaceful week as we take a little break. I want to recognize all of my board members for participating in a very intense training this past week and to work on, on our governance issues. I want to also appreciate Debbie Jordan, who is a returning chair, and she did a very good job under very difficult circumstances, an unusual year, and she held it together, treated the public and all of us with respect. So I want to really appreciate that and thank her. And with that, Godspeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Chivinelli?
Well, I was going to ask for you to come back to me, but I'm.
Hey, do you?
If you don't mind.
No, I have no.
What about the student? That's, why we making her stay here?
She's staying with us.
Okay, okay.
Where do you want to go now?
I, whatever you are.
We're going to keep you here. Okay. We're keeping her. Okay, Ms. Morgan?
Let's see. First of all, I want to emphasize what Ms. Fisher said. And I also want to thank Attorney Dupuy Bruno. For the members of the public who weren't aware, we've put in somewhere between 30 and 40 hours of intensive board development over the last week and a half. We recognize that we're not meeting your expectations and we are working very hard to tackle some of our personal and our personal whatever issues and, and work together as a board team. This would not have happened without Attorney Dupuy Bruno. I honestly entered this process with trepidation, as I think my colleagues did. I feel very confident going forward that this board will move from its storming stage of board development to a more normal stage. And I, I hope that you all appreciate, are able to appreciate how hard we really are working to address your concerns about the quality of our work. I also want to thank the teachers and bus drivers. You know, it's, thank you. And, and I don't know how else to say it. I mean, I don't know what else to do. We are very concerned about the conditions in which our teachers are teaching, our classroom professionals are working, our bus drivers, everybody's working under tremendous stress. We don't have enough staff, we don't have enough bus drivers. Times are very difficult for a lot of people. We're asking an awful lot. And I know that people feel underappreciated. And honestly, sitting here at the board table, I don't know how to say or do anything that will reassure you that we really appreciate you, we appreciate what you do for our children. I know the community appreciates you. So thank you. And the only other comment I will make, and I'll make it very brief, we did have construction advisory. I am very excited because two, two of the committee members are seriously interested in bringing forward new ideas for zero energy, energy efficient, sustainable, electrical power. So the committee has, is engaging in some of this work, exploring it. They've asked for more information from the two board members who presented, and we will be continuing the conversation. And if it's fruitful, I think we will see them engaging with staff and perhaps with our delegation. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Patrica?
Thank you. May I ask Allison to refresh my collection on her last name?
Brunel.
Brunel?
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent. Okay, Ms. Brunel, I'd like to address you through the chair. It's really hard for me to believe that you're only a junior. I've known you for several years now and your maturity and presence are really just not in line with your age. You are incredibly composed and knowledgeable and I believe you're a born leader. I want to encourage you to keep up the good work and please stay in touch with the board when you matriculate from the district so that we can all follow what I believe will be your inevitable successes. Do we have a deal?
You have it. Thank you so, so much.
Thank you. And I want to reiterate my agreement with Ms. Fisher that we appreciate all the people who attend board meetings and provide public comments. I also know that there is so much information associated with the district that it's sometimes difficult to keep it all straight. In, excuse me, in that spirit, I would like to correct some inaccuracies from public comment this evening. The first is to address FSBA's status with NSBA. The Florida School Boards Association Long Range Planning Committee voted unanimously yesterday to recommend to the FSBA Board of Directors that we allow FSBA's NSBA membership to lapse. I want to remind you all that, that we have not paid dues at all this year, and that decision was made in June, long before the NSBA letter was sent to President Biden. The Long Range Planning Committee further unanimously voted to recommend to the FSBA Board of Directors that the FSBA become one of 10 state associations founding members of a new national association for school board members so long as the new association has a focus on urban education issues. Madam Chair, can I ask my colleagues at this time if anybody has any questions regarding our FSBA status with NSBA?
Are there any questions that you all have? No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. There was some discussion about school grades under Dr. Atkins, who became the superintendent in 2015 when the district grade was a B. Also, at that time in 2015, we had 23 DA schools. As a reminder, DA schools are those that are graded a D or an F by the state of Florida. When Dr. Atkins retired in 2021, our district grade was a B and we had zero DA schools. Also, I think that it was mentioned tonight that Dr. Savage said that all transportation administrators hold CDL licenses. I may have heard this incorrectly, but I don't believe that was what he said. I, I was calling into that meeting, so I may have heard him incorrectly. If I may through the chair, ask Dr. Savage to repeat what he said about the qualifications for transportation admin to, you know, allow them to fill in for bus drivers, please.
Dr. Savage, because I know you had said that you did, you were not, you did not have that information.
Right. I did not make the comment specifically. I relied, I think it was Mr. Dotig who was available, and again, we wanted to make sure whatever he cited was confirmed. I think he was speaking specifically of supervisors such as route supervisors. He was pretty clear that the senior administrator up, the director level up, they were not, they were not those folks that they were speaking of. So we'll make sure to get the exact information of who carries CDLs and put that in the weekly board update so it is exact.
Yeah, I believe that's correct.
I appreciate that, that clarification. Madam Chair, I have two more items, if I may.
Ms. Patrica, go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to remind the public that Dr. James Adams was shot to death in his office. The safety measures that we are adopting have been proven to be necessary. If we have these safety measures in place in 1994, it is very likely that Dr. James Adams would likely have been safe from harm. Madam Chair, I'd like you to please add the topic of renaming the Lee County Public Education Center, the Dr. James Adams Education Center, to our parking lot list of potential workshop topics.
Okay.
And finally, regarding our district logo, personal, passionate, and progressive, the political definition of progressive is different from the meaning attributed by this nonpartisan school board. It means that we are always progressing or moving forward. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica. Ms. Chivinelli? It is your turn.
I still would like to wait. Ms. Gittens has a motion that she wanted to present tonight, so I would rather wait because that determines what I'm going to do.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
Yes, I have a couple of comments. Thank you. Sorry?
No, that's why I was trying to get everything out because I thought you had something.
I do?
Yes.
Like I said yesterday, I would bring it. Couple of comments. First of all, two speakers mentioned the exit interviews. One of the things that I had discussed when I first got on the board and asked for information about was exit interviews. I asked it several times because I feel it is very, very important. It was important then and it's important now. I'll take this down while I speak. And my, my comment three years ago was, if we don't talk to the people that are leaving, how do we improve? How do we really know what it is that caused them to leave? And I totally agree with you about doing something on paper is intimidating because if you are moving to another position and are concerned that, that may in some way affect you moving to a new position, that could be intimidating. So I totally agree with that. I think exit interviews should be done in person. The data should be kept strictly so that we know which areas, which schools, which departments, which supervisors, which whatever have the most turnover and be able to handle it accordingly. Ms. Evans, I congratulate you and I congratulate all of you for having a new representative of Spalk that is representative of what you guys need. I hope that that is the case. And when we talk about the unions and Talc and Spalk, when I was a teacher, I know we talked a lot about who is representing us. And we need to make sure that whoever it is is someone that we have confidence and trust Ms. House, you kind of led into my statement about reinvesting in the district, and I thank you for those words. When we spoke yesterday about Quadruple A and the amount of money that we've already spent and potentially we're going to spend, spend at least $100 million, my, I think it was Mr. Rickenbacker made the comment that $15 million, it would take $15 million to extend a school, and he said anywhere from 200 to 400 seats. So if you divide that 15 million into the 100 million, you've got over 2,000 seats that would be added just by taking away the portables and adding an extension to a building. Just, just saying. Another thought for that 100 million. Another thought for that 100 million would be, and I know it's different funding sources, but it can be arranged. We could, for $240,000, just $240,000, we can provide in four of our most needed middle schools, two full-time subs, $240,000 from now until next June, just $240,000. I've talked to some of the principals about this, and they're looking, they were looking at how they can take it out of their funds or whatever, and I said, why? We can't find $240,000. And let me explain what it's for. We have coaches and teachers and all this staff, and everybody is covering classes. Covering classes. So we talk about the achievement gap. If we don't have the math coach in there helping the teachers to help the kids to catch up on the math, you know, because they're covering a class, that's an issue. And if $240,000 would give four middle schools, two permanent subs, and I know we have to beat the ground to find them, but I bet we could to find two permanent subs for each of those schools. That way, these teachers wouldn't have to be covering classes, the teachers wouldn't be as stressed, they could teach what they have to teach and coach what they have to coach. We, I just, I don't know. I think we have got to get outside of the box. We cannot continue to do things the way we're going. I looked at the vacancies for this last week, 67 core subjects, math, English, science, 67 core teachers in the East Zone only. And that's not even the others. And trust me, I'm not blaming somebody. I'm saying that whatever we need to do, we need to do. I have a feeling, when I was a teacher, and there's always that December flight, and people will be there until December, it's like, I'll hang out till then, and then I'm out of here. Okay, so we are going to, I spoke to the superintendent about it. He says we are where. We need to do something now. If we've lost 67 teachers in one area in core subjects, how are we bringing those students that have missed all that they have because of COVID back up to speed? We're looking at an achievement gap that's going to go like this instead of like this if we can't get, one of the teachers was saying that one of the benefits of having a permanent sub, because right now, you can have a class of students that see a different teacher every day if their teacher's out for two weeks because it's whoever can cover that class. And again, not blame, we need to stop the blame and just figure what can we do? It is a crisis. So I wanted to bring that up, $240,000, keep that in mind, and we'll be bringing it up again. And I also want to say, I went to Pinewood's Elementary and South High School, and thank you, Ms. Gunderson, for the wonderful tour. I had never been out there. I felt like I was going deep into the woods somewhere, and I finally got there. Beautiful, lovely school. And the thing that I will say to them, you know how you visit a school and you'll have one class or a couple of students that are a little rambunctious, even though you've threatened them, teachers, if somebody comes in here? Every single class I went into, every single student was on task and involved and paying attention to their teachers. The only thing that interrupted them was if, as I walked by, it wasn't they were distracted, they were, look what I'm doing, let me show you what I'm doing. Excellent, excellent learning is going on there, and I thank them and all of the staff and the teachers that work so hard. And then I went to South High School. Mr. Matthews is the poster child for community partnerships and preparing students for their future. I mean, if it goes from goats to cement, whatever your interest is, you can find it itself, from fire and, like I said, goats, chickens. They were measuring and trying to, they have been donated an area to build a, what's it called that they're, I forget the name of it. They're building a building out back for their...
Aqua products?
No, 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 I forget. It's part of their construction thing. But anyway, they're building the building from the ground up. So the kids were standing out there with the little, I've always wanted to do this, stand in the middle of the road and do, you know, look through the tripod thing. They were doing all of that and learning all types of skills. And they were telling us about one student, I'm going to try to get her here. She had entered high school, wanted to be a doctor, and she ended up going into some form of construction or whatever, but she's making mega bucks, okay? She's doing super, super, super well. So I thank you to the two of them. And then finally, yesterday, our discussion was about Quadruple A. And I know we will have discussion, but I would like to make a motion. I move that we suspend the construction plans for Quadruple A at this time.
I second it.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, I second it.
Okay, I didn't say it. Okay. Discussion?
Well, since it was my motion, I just wanted to say, we have all the data, the data was out there for seven days. Everyone has had an opportunity to see it. And like I said, we have spent, what, $2.8 million? Some of it we will be able to recoup if we stop this project, and that was explained yesterday. When the purchase of the steel happened, you know, several months ago, and they did say at the time that if there were any changes, we could use it somewhere else. Also, the plans, and we talked about that yesterday, that the plans can be used somewhere else in the district. So someone said to me, why aren't you mentioning, why didn't you mention East Zone? Because right now, it's not about the East Zone, it's about taking one step at a time. Let's take this project off the table and really look at prioritizing our resources. Where can we best use our funds? I will be very disappointed if the vote is against it, and I will be embarrassed for some of my board members because the facts are there, the growth is not. And we have to do what's right for children. So that is my motion.
Thank you. And Ms. Gittens, your motion, you had sent that ahead, correct?
I sent, I sent two emails, just let me explain. The one email, I put some other stuff out, but you do have the verbiage.
Correct.
I sent out the verbiage of the motion this afternoon.
Okay, I just want to make sure that...
Do you have that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Ms. Chivinelli?
So I've been compelled to speak about this now, following the concerns that not have been addressed by the superintendent. I was inundated with calls last night about the general feeling of the lack of transparency and forthcoming with the data regarding Astero. I still want to be clear, the need for schools for the foremost is in the East Zone, not in Astero. I see that the next need may be in Benita Springs, but it's certainly not Astero. Yesterday, the question was asked, how many students attending Pinewood's, Three Oaks Elementary and Middle School, and Three Oaks Elementary Middle School, that are not attending their close proximity school? What are those numbers? This was never answered. The answer was essential to the understanding how the district arrived at the decision to build the new K-8 school in Astero. It is important to note that numbers provided yesterday was approximate, was only approximate numbers and were significantly higher than the ones presented a month ago by Mr. Rickenbacker. For the sake of transparency, the public needs to know how we got here, and they need to be assured it won't happen again. How do we do that? First, we need the real numbers from 2015 to 2021. Also, the district informed we knew that $3 million had been spent so far toward the building of K-8 Astero School. The number is not factual. It is not factual because there was land purchased on Block Lane and fees paid to planners, architects, and approvals for the building of the school on Block Lane with which, excuse me, with which the board voted for. Then, when the building site was switched to Three Oaks, those very planners, architects, approvals for the building of the school were paid again, now twice. There was never an actual vote to move from the first site to the second. This circumvented public comment and input. Yesterday, we learned that $4 million of the money had been encumbered, and they were not sure if the school district was even going to get a credit back for the money spent on the steal. The purchase of the land for $4 million and payment planners and $4 million, another $4 million on the steal, that comes to $12 million. And in order to have full transparency, to make sure this doesn't happen again, the public, and we must gain public trust, and we need to have a forensic audit to do that, to be conducted by the OIG or the Florida Auditor to determine exactly how much money has been spent to date on the building of the K-8 school in Astero since its inception from Block Lane purchase through the present day, and how those student population rates were determined, and ask why now, why now, we're just now looking at this, only because we've had, federal complaints have been submitted to different federal agencies over the very concern. So I will be supporting Ms. Gittens' motion, but I still think that we have to address this much deeper and take a deeper dive on how we got here. That's the only way that we're going to have the public trust and be able to move forward truly by moving in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chivinelli. Any other, Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, I will be supporting this motion as well. We had a lot of conversation about this yesterday, and I feel that one of the questions that was not answered was, how did we get here? I mean, there's, you know, there's the very factual, well, first we were here, and then we were there, and then, but I had a much deeper meaning to, how did we get here? Unfortunately, and this started in 2017, so that was before a few of us were even on the school board, the agreement with Village of Astero. And to me, from day one on the board, there have been more questions than answers and more, more things that really, especially in retrospect, were not, I feel were not forthcoming in what, you know, in reality. And so I would not be, you know, right now, we have this one motion, but I would not be opposed to taking a look backward to see exactly why, you know, why it was we bought this land on Block Lane, and then the Three Oaks property was up for sale, and then it wasn't, and, you know, what really motivated all of that? And so that's a whole nother discussion, but I would not be opposed to that discussion as well to see if there were illegal machinations that occurred during this time period. So I will be supporting this.
Thank you. Is there any other, Ms. Gittens, I want to see, I will come back to you, but I want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to speak. Ms. Fisher, did you?
Yes, thank you. So I think that I am supporting this because we know where we are. We had that information yesterday at the workshop. So now we need to say, where are we going? And I would like to see if we can request that staff investigate the potential in transferring the credits to an area of greater need that's imminent now, using the plans, materials, and the services that we have already paid for, and transferring that to the next spot that we all agree on and that the public supports. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica? I'm sorry, Ms. Patrica, did you have any comments?
Yes, if I may, through the chair, ask Dr. Savage what his recommendation is?
Certainly. Dr. Savage? If you care to?
Absolutely. Well, I've heard four, so far, four board members express an interest in not moving forth construction. So, you know, I just want to preface this by saying, I work at the will of the board. So if the board makes it clearly known that they do not want to proceed with our current, with the Phase Two to begin that, that is certainly within the board's discretion, and that's why staff presented the options that they did. I want to kind of characterize that there's many members of the project team coming at it from a variety of perspectives. The overwhelming majority opinion was that based on the change in the data, the change in the financial relative position of where we are, the slowing of growth, the diminished numbers of students who are in attendance since the advent of the pandemic and presently in the building, that for most reasons, it really does not make sense to proceed with the Phase Two. And it's precisely one of the reasons why the phased construction approach exists, so that before you go directly into the next phase without interruption, you bring that decision back to the board in the split phases. That was a lesson that the prior administration learned through Benita High and implemented, and we've continued to try to implement that in this structure. So that's the opportunity for that piece. Now, I will tell you that from my perspective, there is also some opportunity to continue to move forward. If you were to move forward, even at increased costs, there aren't that many schools down there. You certainly, over the life of that school, schools aren't built for one year, five years, they're built for 50-plus years. Some of our schools go up to 100 years. In fact, Benita Elementary down there is a 100-year-old school, at least certain parts of that building. So having a school down there is certainly a worthy consideration to stay the course. The problem is, it would be very expensive to do so. If you were to continue on that course, you're going to pay substantially more than what we've done for our other schools. And in a situation where we do have such dramatic growth in the East Zone and such a need that's already present, as evidenced by the portables, and that we have so many other critical projects that we want to do, I would stand with the team, and I would certainly stand with the board, that, you know, this is the time to press the pause button on Phase Two. That's the most judicious thing to do. However, you know, that's something that, you know, I find myself very conflicted about, very important to state that because, quite frankly, our business is K-12. We're going to, portables are not the long-term answer down there. We have many students in portables. I've never been of the mindset that you can only build in one portion of the district at a time, that you can build anywhere in the district that you need as long as you have the resources to do it. That's why in this most recent capital plan, I really wanted to see a substantial amount of growth happening in the East Zone. But I think if you're putting it, you know, and you want a recommendation, I would say, weighing all those things, and they are all very important, valid considerations, that I would side with the project team, that now is not the time to proceed directly into Phase Two. I think we can at least manage our, we have no idea what the market conditions will do. We have no idea. It may get very much more expensive to build. So there is no way to wave a, you know, magic wand or look into a crystal ball and know for certain. We have to make the best decision we have with the best data available, and unfortunately, the data available to us says that this is going to be very expensive, and we may not necessarily see the original numbers that they used back when they went for state approvals. I know Ms. Eba speculated that we would not receive state approval. I know it was echoed in public comment. That is speculation on her part, but she is qualified. So for her to make that statement means that she knows what kind of considerations go into that, and so I have to take that professional judgment to say that if we were to do a spot series and approve it now, her estimation is they would not approve it. But it is speculation. I don't want to cite that as if it is, if it's fact. But that's kind of my thinking on the issue and my recommendation for the board.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
Thank you, Dr. Savage. Separately, I do, the audit process, I'm sorry, the audit of the construction process that was suggested by Ms. Chivinelli, I do believe, and I don't know, perhaps staff could check on this, I do believe we've had enough... could check on this, I do believe we've had enough construction projects since our new process was adopted to justify an audit and to give us enough data to, you know, make the audit meaningful. But I offer to the board consideration of whether this is an audit that should be made as a recommendation from our board auditor that we are about to hire. So if we could add that item as a discussion item in the parking lot, Madam Chair? Please.
Any other comments, Ms. Patrica?
Just my, this is a question the superintendent to provide in an upcoming board update, the age of our buildings across the district, please, assuming that, that information is readily available.
Yes, we can put that in this week's board update, all of the schools chronologically. Just bear in mind, though, for building, for some schools like the Benita Campus, while it was built, you know, 100 years, there are multiple buildings on there of varying different ages. So you'll get the oldest building, the list that's provided specifically has the school, and then the, the year that it was first constructed. So we'll provide that list with this week's board update.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Savage. Those are my comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
I have none.
Did I, did you have any comment? Everybody already commented. Ms. Gittens?
May I go now?
Yes, yes. I just want to make sure I have everybody.
Okay.
Thank you.
The comment I have, I, I've heard several of my colleagues tonight say, how did we get here? And, and the bottom line is that I didn't stay in my lane for two years, six, one, I didn't stay in my lane, because I knew that the problems were there. And like I said before, I hope that now you join me in that lane to make sure we look at the specific growth areas in the East Zone, not the East Zone as a whole, but specific areas of need. And I spoke to the superintendent about this, that sometimes we just blanketly say East Zone, and we forget the pockets where the necessity really is. So that's how we got here. Thank you.
Okay. And then, and I'm just going to chime in as well. I believe that we had, all the information was given to us. The numbers are not there based on our conversation, so I will be supporting Ms. Gittens as well. And yes, Ms. Gittens, you have been carrying the torch for this one. So if there is no other comments, Fisher?
Yes, I just have one comment, kind of for the good of the order, but at the November 2nd meeting, item M9 was pulled. It was regarding exhaust fans, and I made a recommendation to, to, to follow that. Dr. Savage pulled the item, and Ms. Javonelli withdrew her motion.
Madam Chair, point of order, we have a motion.
Yes, thank you.
We have to vote.
We're still, we haven't voted yet.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
I am sorry. I'll hold it.
Yeah, so that's why if there's no further discussion on this item, on this motion, I will go ahead and do a hand vote.
I'm so sorry.
Okay.
Don't we do public comment on a motion?
Oh, we do. I'm so sorry. Anyone here that would like to speak on this, please go to the podium. Deprey Bruno, do you want how many minutes or?
Depending on how many people, I'm assuming it's going to be less than 20, so it'll be three minutes per person.
She's just running around.
Ms. Nyström, if you could start whenever you'd like.
Denise Nyström, it's been eight months. Mrs. Gittens, I can't even imagine what it's like to be two years, asking these same questions, watching everybody sit quietly like they had no idea what it was that we were asking them for. Never, when I worked and ran school districts, would I ever have accepted numbers that were approximately. Approximately could be for the year coming ahead, but every year, there are charts put together, for example, the ones that Mr. Rickenbacher put together, that say what the actuals are. Yet even yesterday, in the presentation, approximate numbers were used. And so a percentage that was 112, that could have been 121, gives you an additional 200 students in a school and not 100. That's a big difference when you're looking at student population growth. And then, somebody told the press last night that only $3 million had been spent. False. The land on Block Lane alone was 4 million, another 4 million was encumbered for steel. There was the planning and preparation that was involved, that was almost 4 million, that's 12 million. There needs to be a forensic audit. Never again, in my, in my paradigm from school districts I work in, could we ever have gotten away with the smoke and mirrors that have been presented to you from staff, accepted by you, probably because you know what was going on. When we look back, we know who was in charge when this whole thing surfaced. We know that it was Atkins who was the superintendent, and that it was Board Member District Three that did five talks a day to tell everybody about the half-cent sales tax. Smoke and mirrors, that's what we've been fighting for. Thank you for not staying in your lane. Dr. Savage, you said on May 4th, 2020, at a presentation on video, and I'm sorry, sir, but you need to tell the truth here, okay, that, that the growth was not in Astero, that it was in the East Lee Zone. So now, let's not talk like the growth suddenly went down. It didn't suddenly go down. We're just all of a sudden telling a little bit of the truth here. All while District Member Three sat quietly. While she could have said, why don't I take a ride out to the East Zone and see what's going on with those kids, black and brown, that have been learning in portables for 30 years? I hypothesize that what happened was really that there were students from San Carlos and other places through school choice that were going to the.
Next speaker, thank you. Mr. Newman, if there's any other outbursts, this is the first warning.
While I'm completely happy that it looks like you're going to be pulling this project, I'm very concerned in how we got here. While we've been advocating for the children in Lehigh, and thank you, Ms. Gittens, for always staying in the fight, even though things look pretty bleak at some times, and not having the support of your superintendent or your board members on many occasions, thank you. There is, there is a bigger picture here. You have a responsibility to us and to the children, that millions of dollars have been thrown into the garbage. Someone needs to be held responsible for this irresponsible acts, negligence, whether it was on purpose or it was a mistake, which I don't believe. You have an obligation to investigate how you got here, because when Scott Rickenbacher was speaking yesterday, he stated that when it went from Block Lane and it went over to Three Oaks, you dropped 500 seats. That was last year in May. It should have been lights going off in your heads. How the hell did I miss 500 seats? You don't drop 500 seats. You know you have a problem at that time. So the lying needs to stop. You need to do a forensic audit on all the monies that was paid between Block Lane and Three Oaks, and then you need to do an audit or an investigation to see how you have these projected numbers in a community that is over 70% of retirees, and they're not having babies at 65 years old. So the money should have never been put there. You know you have many mistakes. Open it up. Be transparent for once. Let's clean the books. You say you want to start all over again, Ms. Morgan? Let's do it. Let's do it. Give us that confidence. Give us that trust that you guys are finally going to do something for the right reason.
Christy Vageli, so I don't really have a whole lot more to say other than, you know, what you've already heard here tonight. I'm really just standing up here, you know, in support of everything that's been said so far. You know, we've all paid into a lot of money into these, into this half penny sales tax, and I think we're all kind of wondering, you know, what's happening with that, what's going to happen with that, you know? And this, the school, the quadruple A, is very concerning to people not just in District Five, not just in Astero. It's very concerning to everyone in every district. It's concerning to every Lee County citizen. You know, no child in Lee County should have to spend a single year in a portable. And the fact that we have had generations, that makes me want to literally cry, that we have generations of children and adults that have grown up in portables in Lee County. If we are at all racist, that is where it lies. That is where it is. And you guys right now have a chance to fix that. Thank you to those of you who spoke up and didn't stop speaking up. I know it gets annoying sometimes, but when you're the only voice in the room saying the right thing, keep saying it. The rest of you guys, do the right thing. It's time for any of you, all of you, to do something that is worthwhile up there, that we, the people, can sit there and say, we appreciate this, we're proud of our board. I bet it's been a long time since you guys have heard those words. We would like to be able to say that. Thank you.
Good evening once again. I'd like to thank Gwen Gittens as well for your constant, constant endeavor to try and make this board accountable. All of you, all we need to do is work together. What we have seen as residents in the audience and parents, we have seen you squabbling. We have seen you unprepared, and this, this is just unheard of. You have the monies right now to do the right thing, and you can work with the jurisdictions. That's really important. When builders go into communities, they should be proffering land. This should not be part of your agenda. Your agenda should be protecting the children, making sure that they have their needs met. This idea that we've spent all this energy on a location, when if we had worked with jurisdictions and said, hey, we're putting in 5,000 units, why don't we require the developers who are making quite a bit of money, require them to set aside land? You can pay for it, but they need to set the sights. If you say you want community schools, neighborhood schools, do it. We will help you. That's all you have to do. And, you know, the, the pleasantries can happen again. You can have a good working situation together, but I, and I applaud all of those that are present. The one that's not present, I request that she step down, because the shenanigans just keep happening, and it's not right. Okay? And we all can see it. So I leave you with that. Good evening, and I want to thank you for your time. I know that you work hard, but we need to work together. We should not be adversaries where you build schools. We should be supporters. Good day.
I, I really, I don't, I don't, I'm confused here. I don't even understand why there's any question. How did you get here? You got here because some people weren't paying attention, and somebody had to bring it directly to you. One of my favorite poetries says, when you know better, do better. And I'm paraphrasing that. Now, it's been brought directly to your attention, it's been sat, put right in front of you, physically, literally, you know better. Now you got to do better. What should you do now? Not build another building. People want you to, you should reinvest in what you already have built. I said before, this kind of helps you know, some people don't want to work in a broke-down building. Some children don't want to go to school in a broke-down building. I never heard of school choice until I moved to South Florida. When I was going to school up north, you went to the school closest to where you lived. Here, you go to school choice. That means that somebody that lives in Fort Myers can go to school in Lehigh. Why? It's a newer school, and they get opt, options that other children don't have. My children, I'm blessed, got to go to school in Lehigh close to where they live. But why should another child that lives in Fort Myers maybe get the first choice? That's not the way, because their parents see a, a better-looking building. That's not the way it should work. But that's what they do. Improve the way the building looks. Take those funds and get rid of those trailers. Know better, do better. Hire those teachers. You need some more paraprofessionals. I was a volunteer at the schools in Lehigh. I can't volunteer anymore. You know why? Of course, because of the pandemic. But you can hire paraprofessionals. You need to take that money and build it into the buildings physically and literally. Pay those bus drivers. Use the funds that you have to do better with what you already have. Stop talking about brick and mortar and start talking about investing in people.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? See, I know other, I will go ahead and ask for a hand vote on this. Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Ms. Vaughn? Sorry, my mic.
Aye.
Ms. Gittens?
Aye.
Ms. Patrica?
Aye.
Ms. Javonelli?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Aye.
And aye. Seven, zero. Motion passes. Ms. Gittens, was there anything else?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Ms. Gittens. Ms. Vaughn? Did I come to you yet?
No. You, you haven't. I have a list of a lot of little things on here. First of all, I wanted to respond to the couple, to the two speakers who, or maybe there were more than two, talking about the resignations, and I absolutely share that, that huge concern. I have, over and over again, actually, since the first day I was on the school board, said that, of course, it's important for us to continually recruit, but more importantly, retention. And how do we retain respect first? Second, respect. And third, respect. And, and because of my teaching background, I mainly was focusing on, on teachers, but that, that goes for all of our staff members. As I've been on the board, I've become aware of some really horrendous things, and lately, some of the things I've heard about the terrible disrespect for our, our bus drivers and actually so many people on, on staff. So that's a huge concern for me as well. Also wanted to respond to the comments on dress code. I guess the easiest I guess the easiest thing to do would be establish uniformed schools throughout. However, personally, I never liked that idea as, as a child or even as an adult for my own children. I, I think, I had two girls. But looking at my grandson and my granddaughter, my granddaughter was so excited when she got out of elementary school and could go to a school where she could wear whatever she wanted. And my grandson was like, kind of, whatever. Yeah, all right, I'll put this, this on. So, you know, that aside, and, and there's schools of thought on, on uniformed schools. And actually, I know a lot of parents that love that idea, especially for the younger children. I know my, my daughter did because it takes a lot of the guesswork out for the children getting dressed in the morning. Plus, there's that factor of, with the uniformity of what the children are wearing, that, you know, one person is in wearing designer clothes and, and somebody else doesn't have that kind, kind of money for that. So, and yes, I, I do believe that the dress codes are unfavorable toward the young ladies. And I like the idea that was brought up by a couple people about gender neutral. And I know I would like to see, take a look at some of the schools that use the general, the gender neutral and, and see how that goes. So that's something, as we move forward with our code of conduct, I think we should be taking a look at. It's already been mentioned by board colleagues that last week, we spent weeks worth, at least 40 hours worth of professional board development. It was very eye opening. It was, it was, it was, it was a good experience. And I want to echo what Mrs. Morgan said about our board attorney. I wasn't real thrilled about it. And actually, there are a few times when I'm like, hmm, is it time to go home yet? But by and large, I'll have to say, she did an excellent, excellent job and worked way overtime in putting together what, what she did for all of us. I did, I guess it was, yeah, a week ago, a school that I toured that I'd never been to before was the Fort Myers Middle Academy. And I can't say enough good things about that school. The principal there, Ms. Lynn Edward, has done, from what I understand in, in getting some background information on the school, has done an incredible job of turning things around in the school and establishing, establishing apparently discipline and establishing just an A-plus staff. I had the opportunity to meet quite a few of the, the staff members. And, and they were all just excellent, excellent people that were very dedicated to the kids. And I really felt that all of them had a real calling for, for, for teaching. And you could tell when you walked in the classroom, somebody, I think Ms. Gittens talked about, when you go in a, a school, especially when it's a middle school, my most horrible grade level to think about. And all the kids are well disciplined and respectful and on task. It, it was just a very, very rewarding experience. The comment about the developers and setting aside land. Yeah, that's, I grew up in New Jersey. Now, of course, we have very, there are very high taxes in, in New Jersey. But that's what was done. You, you didn't just plop down hundreds of buildings and not put aside land for parks or schools or even sidewalks. I found that pretty shocking. The first time I saw the really nice neighborhood my daughter was living in in Cape Coral, very nice houses, but there were no sidewalks. And that's, that's, that's a huge safety issue. And I'm gonna say, take it up with the county commission or the municipalities. I don't know that much about it. But it's, it's been a huge issue with, with the county commission. Anyway, that's something that you can look into. I, I like Ms. Gittens' idea about permanent subs. Not sure about the issue of, you know, how much it would, they would be paid. But I actually, probably at least a month ago, talked with both Dr. Savage and I believe Dr. Carlin and Dr. Spiro and talked to them about establishing a new positions, kind of somewhere, kind of between paraprofessional and teacher. Because one of the huge problems is, of course, what's already been brought up about teachers being pulled out of the classroom to cover other people's classrooms. But that's costing us way more than having a sub. Way more. Because teachers are paid at their hourly rate. And so if you have to cover all day with teachers paying each of those teachers their hourly rate, it's probably, it could be two or three, at least two or three times more than it would be for a sub. So I'm not gonna go into my ideas on that. I hadn't heard anything back from those individuals. But they said they would be looking into things like that, similar to that. Finally, I said that I had something that I needed to bring forward from EDAC. I'm the liaison to the EDAC committee. EDAC had a presentation from the, from the group who presented to us as a board on the various maps. They were extremely interested in that. Couple of the things came up this afternoon in the briefing. First of all, something that we are going to put on the parking lot, the, for, it's not something that needs to be done right now, but the idea of seven single member districts. Because as EDAC talked about what was, you know, the maps that they liked, one of the things that was brought up that had been touched on a month before was, you know, equity and, and, in terms of diversity and all that goes along with that, that I don't have time to get into. But this, this is, it would be a huge public conversation. And there'll be more on, on that eventually. Anyway, the thing that EDAC brought forward, and I'm going to, to read it. Excuse me. They approved a motion to recommend that the board move forward with disseminating the letter that was drafted. And they are referring to the letter drafted by the board attorney for the governor. And that letter was read to the EDAC committee at our, at our meeting. And, and so I realize that that was, actually, I made a motion at, I guess, our last, was it our last action meeting? I lose track of time, or maybe two?
The last action meeting.
Time flies. And it died. And I did explain that to EDAC. And I explained that, you know, it had been brought up, discussed, and I, it wasn't even seconded. But I feel that it's incumbent on me to bring this back for any further discussion because the committee was very adamant that we should look at it. And they were adamant that a letter should be sent. So I, I bring it up now on behalf of the EDAC committee. And I would like to hear any comments that the board has.
Ms. Vaughn, are you making a motion?
Okay. Well, the, the motion would be then that the board move forward with disseminating, I move, that the board move forward with disseminating the letter that was drafted by the board attorney to be sent to the governor regarding, I think, I can't remember the exact, was it abuse of power? Regarding the actions. Let's just say regarding the actions of board member Patrica. So this is what they, they wanted brought forward. And again, I feel that...
Motion, is there a second?
Do we have a second?
I'll second it. But I don't know why we're seconding something that we've already voted on. I don't, that doesn't make sense to me. I mean, I, I, can I? So I actually, the letter that was drafted by Attorney DePree Bruno was not, was not what we voted on. So I did not approve that to go out. It needs to, and it also needs, the board voted on this. So this needs to be, it was a board decision. And it should all have everybody's, everybody's name on it that is on the board. Or come from the attorney that actually, you know, that the whole, that we, is exactly what we voted on. So that was my concern. So I put a call in to also Mr. Quick. And Mr. Quick said that the board attorney should be able to write the letter according to the, the vote and the motion. So that's where it stands. When I spoke back to Attorney DePree Bruno, she suggested that we have a conflict attorney write the letter. So that's kind of where it's at at this point. We've not given, I mean, we've given direction by the motion, original motion. So I don't understand the conflict.
Yes, and, and...
Okay, well, we have a...
Madam Chair, if I may...
Yes, because we do have a motion on the floor and a second. So yes, please.
If I may clarify, I did explain exactly what you said in your initial comment, that my motion was to send it because we couldn't come to an agreement on what the letter should, what kind of content should be in the letter. And I did bring forward, well, let's, I moved that we just send it as written. But it, but it died. And so EDAC understands that. And I just wanted to bring up one, you know, they, they understand all that.
So they are asking, what you're asking us is that what was presented to EDAC is what they would like to be sent. And that is a letter that was written already by Attorney DePree Bruno.
Exactly.
And even though you had made the motion and everybody understood that there was no second, there would be no conversation, that's how that died.
Exactly.
I just wanted to...
Exactly.
Explain all of that which took place. Ms. Gittens?
Okay. Well, my thought on the original motion and the original letter would be similar to, you know, when we're correcting a policy or something, a draft is sent out and everybody adds their comments or thoughts to it. No one, I mean, I said some things. But I, I think where we need to be is the motion passed. And then just a discussion on that, I believe it's in our policies that says, once a majority of the board votes on something that the rest of the board that was dissenting vote needs to follow the majority of the board. That's what we do every time we vote. I mean, otherwise, we would all be going after every vote because it was a five-two or a four-three. And I don't believe that it should be that you can opt out of something that you don't, you know. We voted and it passed. So I think that we should follow our policies and do that. And I, I think if we send it as a draft with the request, if anybody has any additional pieces to add to it, and then look at the final and as a board, not bring it back to the board again because it's already been voted on. But just add whatever. And then the final is done by Attorney DePree Bruno. We all see it. And rather than having our digital signatures, I believe we should have a actual signature just to give it credence.
And then, Mr. DePree Bruno, I think, I'm gonna refer to you because I believe you were instructed to, not to ask us for comments and for us to help write this. We were, you were instructed to write something and to send it.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to find the minutes from that meeting. If you'll give me one second, I wanna find the minutes.
Madam Chair, it was my motion, I can speak to that. It was basically that she would write the letter. There was nothing in there that said, we don't get to look at it. And she just writes it and sends it. I mean, she is our employee. And something that's going out on behalf of the board, we should have a say so in. So...
The motion was clear on what we wanted. So that's what she was writing the letter for.
Well, but the motion was clear too. Like I've said before, I stated to work with the chair, I mean, with the attorney to draft, to a letter. And somehow it got lost in translation and it became just that she would write a letter. Not that she would write it and just send it. I specifically asked to work with her.
You, Ms. Gittens, you specifically asked to work with her. That was not part of the motion. And...
But if you look back, it was changed.
Excuse me. The members did not agree upon a member working, one single member working with the attorney to write a letter about anybody. That's why she was instructed to write the letter. And she wrote the letter as per our instructions. And that came back to us. And then Ms. Vaughn did the motion. It was not seconded. It did not go through. Ms. Vaughn had, it went to EDAC. Ms. Vaughn is now back again because EDAC has read the letter. And I'm just going...
Okay.
EDAC came back and wrote the letter.
Madam Chair, may I just say?
Yes.
If that was the process, the motion that was on the table was a motion I stated. And you moved forward with a vote on a motion that had not been made. Because my motion stated I would work with the attorney. Somehow in the translation, that was moved. So there should have been an additional motion.
Mr. DePree Bruno?
Okay. So the motion that was passed on October 19th, 2021, pursuant to the minutes, was the following. To contact the governor regarding a board member's systemic, consistent, abusive position and accountability for actions. That was the motion and it passed 4-2. And the letter that was drafted was written to the governor but not sent. And it was a draft that was sent to all the board members. States, please be advised that on October 19th, 2021, the Lee County School Board voted to request that you investigate and provide guidance on the perception that a board member has systemically and consistently abused her position. They are also seeking guidance on how they can hold this member accountable. They would appreciate you looking into this matter and advising of same. If you have any further questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. So that was the letter that was drafted and sent to the board. And at that point, if there's anything that the board wants to do with the letter, it's up to the board. Now, what I have stated is that I cannot draft and nor would I recommend anybody to draft because you're asking the governor to do an investigation. So you ask the governor to do an investigation. People are entitled to due process. So you allow that process to happen. I cannot draft what is, I would define as a prosecutorial letter where I'm prosecuting a board member. I cannot do that. If you want a letter that's a prosecutorial letter where you are actually prosecuting one of your board members, then I believe you, I, I'm going to request an outside counsel because I believe that will be a little bit, that will push me too far in terms of... because I believe that will be a little bit, that will push me too far in terms of my fiduciary or my ethical obligations to my client.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
Okay, we are not asking to prosecute anyone. My concern about the letter is there were no details. If I were the governor that received a letter saying, look into this situation, we think there's something wrong. You have to give some type of facts if they are stated, for example, this situation, this situation, this situation. That was my concern that the letter was just, and especially the verbiage, you know, there's a perceived, possible, whatever, but there's no meat in it.
Well, I will, excuse me, Ms. Gittens, I will say that the letter was not only based on the motion that was actually passed, but there was a prior motion and there was a lot of discussion. And I'll just give you the example and why I use perception because that was actually part of the discussion. The original motion was to contact the governor's office to at least see what recourse we may have and to look into an abuse of power or what is there anything that could be done. I know we can't sanction, but what are our possibilities? That was the original motion which was withdrawn and then it was cleaned up with this motion, which was to contact the governor regarding a board member's systemic, consistent abuse of position and accountability for actions. So based on the discussions prior to, you know, during this whole thing about the motions, that's why the letter was drafted in the way that it was drafted. It completely reflects the motion that was passed by the board. Now, if the board would like some additional facts, please tell me what they are and I will tell you if this is something I'm comfortable with adding to the letter.
So we have, still have a motion on the floor and that motion is, Ms. Vaughn, would you please restate?
Let me clarify one other thing because Ms. Javonelli stated that why are we having this additional motion when there is a motion to draft this letter? So let me clarify, there is a motion that is out there to draft this letter, it was properly seconded and it passed. Now, the letter was drafted because you instructed me to draft the letter via consensus. The letter was drafted, the board did not like the letter, there was a discussion, then Ms. Vaughn made a motion, okay, let's go ahead and send this letter that was drafted. There was no second to that. Ms. Vaughn then went to EDAC and then EDAC said, we, EDAC also was read the minutes from the meeting, EDAC was read the letter that was drafted and then EDAC instructed Ms. Vaughn to come back to the board and advise or recommend to the board that they send the letter that was drafted as it reflected the minutes. And that is what the motion is that's right now on the floor.
Thank you, thank you for that explanation as well. I appreciate that. So there is a motion on the floor. Should I have Ms. Vaughn restate that?
So.
Just for clarity?
Just for clarity, Ms. Vaughn, the motion from EDAC.
Yes, just for clarity, thank you, Ms. Vaughn.
Okay, and, and I do want it to be understood that this was a long conversation at EDAC and I did explain our normal protocol with this, that it was going to be dropped, but this is what they wanted me to do and again, it's incumbent on me to represent exactly what they wanted me to do. So, and I'm paraphrasing here, all right, I move, I move that the board move forward with disseminating the letter that was drafted by the board attorney for, to the governor.
Thank you. So based on that, we've already had discussion. I can go ahead and take the vote now?
No, you need public comment.
Were anyone out there here to speak? Please go to the podium. And whoever would like to step up first, please do so.
Kristy Divageli, so this is fun, we're up here talking about this again. I don't think, oh man, I don't want to waste anybody's time, but I have a whole three minutes to talk to you guys about what you should have already done like weeks ago. This letter needs to go out in the mail, it's already been written. Send it out, send something out, anything out. You know, we've sent enough letters to the governor, now it's your turn. You need to investigate. I don't know why we are still sitting here having this same conver, I mean, I know why, I know why, but I'm asking you to do better, be better, send the letter and no more conflicts of interest, no more, I can't do this because it's outside of the purview of that. Let's just write the letter and send it in the mail. I know you're looking at that clock, I'm looking at it too, I got a whole two minutes left. So I hope everybody up here today votes to send some kind of letter to the governor requesting an investigation into board member Chris Patrica's abuse of position, of power, of whatever you want to call it. And this needs to be taken care of. The fact that she's not even here today, and I know you guys mentioned it earlier, I do not remember what it was, but like that's even super suspect as well, like why she's not here and we've talked about so many issues pertaining to this one particular board member. So I don't want to sit up here and do, and just waste everyone's time like some others tonight, which I've rather enjoyed, but please do the right thing, guys. Like we just did something really awesome by choosing to stop, you know, with the construction of quadruple A, do something else that's awesome right now. Give us a real reason to go home and not like regret coming here tonight. So thank you very, very much for your time, thank you for all the hard work that you do put in. I know you get a lot of crap from us all the time and I will not apologize for that crap. I will instead thank you for putting up with it and ask you to do the right thing tonight. Have a good night.
Okay, and please just remember, we are only speaking on this one topic. Thank you. It's not, it's not directed to you, I'm just reminding because we have other people coming.
Denise Nystrom. At the end of that board meeting, Attorney Bruno was, I guess, directed to write this letter. The letter, there was nothing mentioned during that time that we were asking the governor how we should go about investigating her. That line does not belong in the letter. Two weeks later, at a follow-up meeting, she said she felt uncomfortable writing this letter. If that's the case, then that letter needed to be handed off to a different attorney because there was a, a motion that passed 4-2. It, it was approved, that letter was approved and to do anything less than what was expected is inappropriate. Now, I know some of you feel sorry for Board Member Three, I guess I don't, because when somebody does the things that she does, they have to be held accountable for their actions. If it was your child, you'd make them be accountable for his or her actions. Well, she's caused a lot of this and it's taken years to get here. You want to do her a favor? Make her be accountable for her actions. If you're all going to change and you're all going to start to work with us better, then she either needs to be able to do the same thing or she needs to go.
The letter that was requested, as I understood it, was going to be kind of impactful, really stressing some specific issues that, that Ms. Patrica has been involved in over the last years. To send a completely generic letter, which I see this as falls way short of that purpose. However, if the board cannot agree with the attorney to send a more specific, detailed letter that really says what the problem is, rather than just vague descriptive terms, then I would suggest the board go ahead and send this vague letter if that's all that the attorney feels that she can do without putting herself in some kind of libelous case or going beyond what she's comfortable doing, then each of you can send your own letters with your specific issues and, and request that the governor or that the governor's staff create a file in order to implement a realistic investigation. Do act in the best way you can, describing as specifically as you can what it is that you want investigated. And then each person put in their letters and we as a public are putting in our letters and all of it can go into this file that really more than just kind of suggests that perhaps the governor might do something or advise you on what you can do, which all that does is repeats the same situation and we go on and on again. And I think we're all pretty tired of it. I am, but then I'm only here once, about twice a week, or twice a month, I mean. You must be exhausted from it as board members and there are so many other issues that we have to deal with. So let's move on, get it done and we in the public can help as well.
Okay, is there any other comments? Is there any other comments? See, no other comments, I am going to go ahead and call for the vote. This will be.
Madam Chair, may I make a statement, please?
Oh, I am so, I am so sorry. Ms. Patrica?
Thank you. I need to, I believe with the advice of Attorney DePree Bruno, that I need to abstain and this is my oral statement that there is a conflict of interest if I participate in this vote.
Yes, you do need, you made your statement that there's a conflict of interest and you're going to abstain from the vote and you'll fill out the appropriate paperwork to attach to the minutes.
Perfect, thank you.
Madam Chair, just to make sure we restate the motion to make sure everybody has it. It's a motion for the board to move forward with disseminating the letter that was drafted by the board attorney to the governor.
That is correct, what EDAC had stated. And we are not having any more conversation, we are on to a vote now. So I'm going to do a hand vote, Ms. Patrica is not voting. Ms. Morgan?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Gittens?
Yes.
Ms. Javonelli?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
No.
And yes. And now, Ms. Vaughn, do you have any other?
No, that, that was it.
Now, I would like clarification from the board.
So that was 4.
The board going to send this on their letterhead with their signature? Or do they want it as drafted?
4-2, as drafted per the, what they stated. It's on letterhead.
Say it again? Put it on the board's letterhead or do you want it to come from the chair?
Is that what, Ms. Vaughn? I'm sorry, Ms. Gittens, I'm trying to clarify for the attorney so we can move on and have Allison speak.
I, I think. What, are, the vote represents what EDAC wants, the main thing is they want it, the letter sent.
Right, but under whose signature do you want it sent, under the chair's signature?
That was not a discussion.
So this is what I want, clarification from the board, under whose signature is this letter going to be sent?
Well, it's, it's Ms. Gittens' motion.
It was a motion, it was passed by a majority of the board, all of the board members need to abide by that. And what I was trying to ask is if we can even say in a PS or whatever that other board members will be sending their information as necessary, if they want to, but I don't want to start a whole motion, so that's fine.
No, but my question is, is this going to be on the board's letterhead with all seven signatures on the letter?
It's a passed motion by a majority of the board. So a majority of the board has spoken, according to policy, it goes out from the board.
Well, we have had letters that are sent under the signature of the board, under the signature of the chair, so I need, well, even under the signature of the attorney. So I need direction. I understand that it was passed by the majority of the board, but I want clarification as to, if the board can just advise me, under whose signature is this letter going to go out? Is it all seven? Is it the chair? How, how is this going to go? That's what I want to make sure.
When other, when other information goes out like this from, even when I was chair, we sent stuff to FLDOE, each board member's name was on that letter.
All right, is that the consensus of the board that all?
Ms. Javonelli, what were you going to say?
Sure. Well, I'm, I, we just need to get this done.
And Ms. Fisher? I saw your hand.
I, I thought the motion from EDAC through Ms. Vaughn was to send the letter as it exists.
Right.
So that's my, my opinion.
So how, how does it exist right at this moment?
It's, it's under my.
Drafted.
Yeah, the draft has the.
The board attorney on behalf of the board.
So send it.
And Madam Chair, I don't think we need to put her in that position to send a letter like it's from the attorney, it's from us.
It is from the board.
It's from the board in a majority vote. Why should her name be on there?
So may I make a suggestion that it be sent through the board chair?
Fine.
Is that okay?
It has to be said, EDAC has asked for it, so we need to send it. We've made the motion, we have approved the motion and now we are going back again, we just need to do this.
But I would like my name on it.
Put her names on it then. Who would like their, like the names on it?
It's not a question, it's a policy.
Is, okay. What was the policy number, Ms. Gittens?
Never mind, Ms. Jordan, we can go on, I'll just send mine by myself.
There's not a policy that says when you're sending a letter, how the letter, how the letter is going to be signed.
The policy is that when a vote is made, everyone has to agree. I've been told that so many times, the board has made a decision, you have to go along.
Ms. Gittens, the board has made a decision, the letter's going to go out.
Letter's going out.
The only question is, under what signature? So I, my recommendation it be sent through the chair.
I don't think that's powerful enough, but whatever the board approves.
Yeah, I just need direction, I just need you guys to tell me what to do. I need direction, please. It's going to go out tomorrow, I just need direction, how you want it to go out, please.
Well, they all want everybody, well, certain ones want their names on it.
Ms. Madam Chair, can you take a poll, please?
Okay.
The question is this, under the attorney with all seven or through the chair, please?
Ms. Morgan?
Chair.
Ms. Vaughn?
Through the chair.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Javonelli?
Through the chair.
Ms. Fisher?
Through the chair.
I'll be more than happy.
Oh, I.
Do you have anything?
No, I'm, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Allison?
Just, just for clarification, at this point, this letter's going to go out tomorrow through the chair's signature, that resolves the motion that was outstanding in terms of sending out the letter. So that resolves all of that.
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. DePree Bruno.
I didn't, you know I didn't do mine.
Are you serious? Well, I am going to skip you for right now because I'm going to go to Allison because I think it's like time for her to get ready for school, no, just kidding. Thank you for being here, Allison, I am so grateful to you and I apologize that it's been this long for you. So please, your comments, honey, for this evening.
I guess I would like to begin with just commending the most important people in the room and that is, of course, our transportation staff and our educators. You guys are the heart and soul of our school system and as a student, I can't commend you enough and I can't thank you enough, you deserve the utmost respect and gratitude. So I would just first like to direct my attention to you because you deserve everything and more. So that's, I'm just going to leave it at that. I would like to thank the board for giving me this opportunity to be here. I, I would like to thank, I, I know Ms. Perez has since left, but her, her speech about the dress code and equality has really spoken to me and I, hearing her speak has really kind of given me hope. kind of given me hope for the future. I, not just because of, you know, hope for what Lee County can be, not just because of what it was or what it is, but what it should be, and our future generations just make me so proud. Every day I see in school students becoming stronger and more empowered leaders, and her talking about equality as a woman really inspired me to a greater extent, and I can't wait to see what she accomplishes later on in life, and I know that we're going to be hearing more from her. So, I just would like to congratulate Ms. Jordan on her reelection, and I'd like to congratulate Ms. Fisher on her vice chair election. I would like to thank you guys once again for this opportunity, and it's, it's been a wonderful night.
We appreciate you, and we appreciate your role on student advisory as well. You are a great leader, and we really do appreciate that.
Thank you.
So, now, before Ms. Javonelli goes, are you okay to stay a little bit longer?
Oh, yes.
You can, okay. Is that okay? Ms. Javonelli?
Okay, I'll be quick. So, I wanted to thank the bus drivers tonight, and I know most of them have gone because they have to get up very early in the mornings, but I just want to thank you for being, feeling empowered and being here because we do need you, and we are listening, and we hear you. And that leads me to, and I also wanted to thank Ms., or congratulate Ms. Evans for the Spock, being the new Spock president. I'm very excited for you guys for that. But one of the, one, something that came up, and this is for the superintendent, that came up yesterday, was that we spent this money for M95 masks, and tonight, there were several bus drivers, and not one of them, not one, had an M95 mask. So, I find that very interesting that we bought these masks and they don't have them. So, I would like to know why, and I would like to make sure they get those masks that we purchased because it cost, I think, $200,000 more that we increased to have those masks. So, I find that really enlightening. So, and this, and then second, I want to get back a little bit, and I know, I don't want to beat this dead horse, but I do want to remind people, because I was sitting here and I was reminiscing about the Quadriplea school, but if we remember, we had a new school built in Benita that was underutilized when it was finished. So, this is not really the first time that we're building a school in Astero that's underutilized and, and has issues. I, I commend this board for pulling it at this time, and, but I think we've got, we went too far again because the school should have been built, I mean, Benita should have been waited, and we should have been building in Gateway because it's, it was full at capacity before the first day of school. There was no openings for that, for that school because I had people contacting me trying to get in Gateway. So, that right there in itself is pretty good description of what is happening or what has happened, and we have to be, do better. So, and then I also, I had a little bit more regarding the, the Astero school, and I think it's really important that we really represent the public because we have a duty and our responsibility to protect the children and the, and the public. I cringe when I hear others say we have a duty to protect the district, especially when there is a waste and misuse of tax dollars, and that's clearly what this is. We are, we are forgetting our oath and our role as elected officials, and I sure hope that we can do better. I'm not going to make this, make a motion, but I do want to make, I'm going to, I'm telling you now that I'm making this motion after, I'm going to make this motion after we have our board workshop, but I was prepared tonight because I think we need to have a forensic audit conducted by the OIG or the Florida Auditor General to determine exactly how much money has been spent to date on the building K8, a school in Astero since its inception from the block lane purchase through the present day. That is something I'm going to be bringing back up. I'm not bringing it up tonight, but I will be bringing that up when we have our workshop or our briefing on this because we want to have a deeper dive, and I'm prepared that we need to seriously do that. So, that is where I'm going to leave that this evening. That is all I have. I spoke earlier on everything that I, about the school, Fort Myers High going to the London Parade in 2023, and they're going to be fundraising, so I, I would like the community to support them. I just want to tell staff to have a great Thanksgiving and a blessed one, and enjoy their time off next week. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will be very brief as well. Many of us have already spoken about the intensive training that we have gone through last week, which I thought was very beneficial to us, and everybody keeps, multiple people tonight says, you know, be better, be better. And so, that is our goal, is to be better, to be the best us that we can possibly be for the district. And, and thank you to Ms. DePree Bruno again. That was, you did an amazing job, and I got a lot out of that. I did have the opportunity as well, as part of this, we went and visited schools, so I went and I revisited two of, two of the schools that I often visit, veterans out in Lehigh and Pelican. So, I went from one end of the town to the other, which a lot of us had to do that on that particular day, and we all really enjoyed the kids. And I just really want to thank the staff for being here all day and night. Appreciate all of you, our bus drivers, of course. I always appreciate them. I appreciate everyone, food and beverage, everyone in our district. And I just am wishing all of you and your families a very happy Thanksgiving, for all of you to be safe and just have some downtime. I'm looking forward to my family. And moving on, I have Ms. DePree Bruno. Do you have anything? Oh, Ms. Fisher, did I miss you?
Yes, thank you. So, just very briefly, on November 2nd, I made a motion to adopt item M9. That was then later pulled by Dr. Savage, and so for the record, I would like to withdraw that formal motion now.
Is that it? You're reading out there. Chair, can she please repeat what it was?
There was a motion at the last meeting. It was item N9. It was with regards to exhaust fans.
Oh, yes.
And there was a little confusion because Ms. Javonelli was going to do a motion, and Ms. Javonelli withdrew her motion, but Ms. Fisher was the original motion maker, so she did not withdraw her motion. So, we're just cleaning that up for the record.
Thank you, because it was pulled by Dr. Savage. Okay, thank you so much for cleaning that up.
Thank you.
Mr. DePree Bruno, do you have any comments?
No, I, I am hoping that this team will continue to move forward and take the steps that it began, and I will be working on board policy 1.111 or perhaps 1.11, so I'm still working on that, and hopefully it will be something that both the board and the public feel is fair and that their rights are heard, and at the same time allows the board to conduct its business. So, this is still a work in progress. It will, I'm going to work on it, and I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and happy Thanksgivings to our wonderful audience that comes and keeps us on our toes, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Savage?
Yes, Madam Chair, just a few quick comments. One, just want to make sure we properly construe the public piece of what was stated. So, one of the things that I want to make sure I clarified for those who weren't here to hear, that didn't go back to watch the tape on this, one of the things we've done is we've shifted our board workshops, briefing, so we can look at each other as a board. We can work together, look each other in the face, so we don't just face each other in here, and what I was speculating on was the configuration of this room is set up very much as an auditorium. So, it almost creates this concept as if we're, there's a show, and we're, we're the main event, and the reality is, that's not what it is really at all. The intention is for government to function. This is a governmental entity, and so by operating the way we do, the idea is to be transparent. The idea is to be able to have opportunities for the public to have input, but do it in an orderly fashion so that the work of this very important business that we run here for the benefit of children can conduct itself. And so, sometimes it's very important to understand what are those moments where the public gives input, but that it's not a dialogue, it's not a back and forth, that there should be no showmanship, it's not really done for that, that piece at all. So, all the comments I made were just strictly to try to identify that when we're sitting there, working together, looking at each other, focusing on the issues, that the intent is really not to focus on viewers who may be sitting there watching us conduct the business. So, I just want to clarify that right out of the gate. But also, just want to kind of echo the comment that we are very grateful to have people who are interested in what we're doing, people who, who not just show up, but people who read the items, who ask clarifying questions, who reach out to our board members, who engage. That is a powerful thing. We're also very grateful to have employees show up and talk about the concerns that they have. You know, one of the things that was on our list was just the staffing shortage. You know, it is evident to us that we have staffing shortages in almost every employee group across the district. So, while we have heard from bus drivers, and we always focus on our teachers as well, we're experiencing this with cafeteria food service workers, our custodians, our support staff. We're experiencing shortages across the entire district, and it's, it's a significant challenge, and it's not one that just Lee County is facing. It's very important that people also understand, we are not alone in this struggle. This is something that's facing not even just our country. It's all across the country, but even the world, we're seeing this. In the country, there were districts such as in Denver and Seattle that experienced closures due to staffing shortages. So, this is a very powerful time, and I think we're, we're all ears in terms of any of those pieces, in terms of constantly trying to figure out what we can do to help people right now through this very difficult moment. Also, just on the, on the construction project, there was made multiple references of whether it's a board auditor, whether it's an independent review, OIG, we fully welcome anything that we, that the board deems appropriate to really look into any of the aspects of this most recent Quadriplea. You know, obviously, this predates me, it goes way back to 2016 and before, so there's just a lot of opportunity to dig that apart, but I'll say, we did put forward a lot of the documents from just the past year, very transparently, put that into the board document for Monday's meeting where the board had a lot of conversations. So, for folks who want to look at the data, who want to see visuals, all those things, they're there for you to unpack and look at, and we're happy to continue to unpack that. So, the very last thing, I just have to acknowledge is that Thanksgiving is selfishly my favorite holiday. It's the one I look forward to more than any other. Number one, because of food. I love food. I love to eat. And number two, because of family. I love spending time with family. There's, it's, but, but most importantly, the thing that really makes it my favorite holiday is because of gratitude. If there's one word that I think means more to me than anything else in terms of the way that I want to live life, in terms of the way I want to lead, in terms of the way I feel about this district, it's about gratitude. We're so grateful to all of the, the people in, that work in this district. We have over 12,000 employees. Each and every one of them, we could not run this organization without their contributions. We could not do it without them. So, to all of our staff who are out there working very hard, who are asked to do so much more because of these staffing shortages, again, and I've said it many times throughout this year, but I'm going to say it again today, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for the sacrifices you make for our children. Thank you so much for all that. The service you provide is tremendous, our bus drivers, all those folks, the teachers, everyone that's out there working. Your jobs are very vital to us. Thank you for your contributions, and those are my comments for tonight.
Thank you. The next scheduled meetings of the board, on Monday, December 6th, there will be a board workshop at 1:00 PM. Also, on Tuesday, December 7th, there will be a board briefing meeting at 1:00 PM, as well as an action meeting at 6:00. At this point, having no other business to come before this body, is seeing no objection. This meeting is adjourned.